The Board previously met in executive session to consider litigation strategy with respect to EverSource Energy, to consider purchase, sale, lease of valuable real property in relation to open space preservation center Trail Town Hall, Main Street Quarter Project, executive session pursuant to MGL 30A, Section 21, purpose two to conduct collective bargaining sessions with the police union related to numerous grievances filed by the union on behalf of its membership and pursuant to purpose three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with police union. And to consider strategy with respect to contract negotiations with non-union employees, town manager, because the Chair has declared that discussion in open session will be detrimental to the litigating or negotiating position of the Board. And now we will enter into open public session and begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will begin with our public session. Members of the public are invited to share ideas, opinions, or ask questions regarding town government. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the Board tonight? Mr. Palmer. Up. He beat Ed. You're next in line. Mr. Palmer, welcome.
Hi. John Palmer, 87, Main Street, member of the Hopkinton Cemetery Commission. And the purpose of my attendance is to do a quick demonstration of the, on our website, of the Hopkinton Cemetery records, which have been digitized and are online. And I'm not how sure, I'm not sure how well-known this is. I've been using it. It's a terrific tool. And I'd just like to do, show the selectmen how it works, show the public how it works. And just take a couple of minutes. So what I have in front of me is, I've got the town of Hopkinton homepage. It's up on the TV. And what we first do is we have to go to eGovernment. It's up at the top of the website. And you scroll down to online cemetery records. It's the bottom item. And you click on that. And it brings up, it brings up a, I'm not used to this touch screen. It brings up a, here it is. It brings up a, another dialog, login, the blue script. If you enter that, then our search matrix will open up. So on this matrix, on the left side, there is cemetery, section, lot, plot, last name, first name, middle name, year of death, et cetera. Those are different ways you can search. If you're trying to find somebody's burial record, and you know their name, their last name, you'd put, you'd put that in under name. So I'm gonna use my own, because I know I'm in there, believe it or not.
Hope you don't find yourself in there.
I found it yesterday when I was fooling around with this. Oops, I don't want it up there. I gotta get that.
So someone who's doing genealogy or family history, instead of having to try to call the cemetery department to find out where their great-great-grandfather is, you can do it from Oklahoma, 2:00 in the morning, and get all their town records.
So we go down to name, last name, I click there. Then I'm gonna put my last name on P-A-L-N-E-R. And then I go over to, on the right, this yellow search button. If I click that, all the last-name Palmers are gonna show up in our cemetery records. So you'll see there's one in Mount Auburn, there's another one in Evergreen, which has got a first name of Ripley. And then there's another one in Evergreen, which is a first name of Marilyn, that's my wife. And there are several others. So what we do here is, I wanna click on this very, the first one. See, on the left, these red PDF symbols. So if you click on a PDF symbol, it'll open up the record that's associated with that. And this is a record, and this is a little tricky, because this record that's associated with it, it says 12 pages, one of 12. And I know I'm in there, because everything that's, well, everything that's referenced in the names is someplace in a record. So I have to page through. I'm on page two. There's a Jess Palmer in there, that's not the one.
I hope not.
I'm on page three, there's another Jess Palmer, it's probably the same one. I'm on page, I'm back, I'm on four. Oh, I see what's going on here. I'm in the wrong place. I want this one here. There I am, on the fourth, the third one up from the bottom, John and Marilyn Palmer. You can enlarge this by clicking on this plus, plus thing, so you can see it. So all that says is there's a four grave lot, it says Ripley. That's my mother-in-law, or my father-in-law. And that's all that record shows. But if we go back over here to the other records, I wanna close this out by going up to that X. That one's closed out. And I wanna go down to another.
Johnny, in the interest of time, can you just kinda summarize for us what can be found on this and how people get there?
So what, what we have is, we have the names of everybody that's rec, all the records that the town has have been digitized and are available here. And they're mostly of burial records. Some of them are just listings of, what you just saw here, listings of names. But they're all there, and then you, you search by clicking on the PDF, and then it opens up that other dialog. You click on that, and you'll find whatever the record is. It might not be what you're looking for, but it's what the record is. But some of them will open up, and it'll be the actual burial record, which will show a sketch of the, of the, of this burial site, and it has, you know, if it's a four lot, it'll say who's in each lot. It's a regular record. It's invaluable. And I'm hoping that people use this. It's not that hard to use. So the, you start at the homepage, you click on eGovernment. At the bottom, it says cemetery records. You click on that. That takes you to another page with the blue, the blue line. You click on that, and that brings you to this search, search matrix.
John, what is the oldest record we have on file in town?
Oh, they go back into eighteen, early 1800s.
Early 1800s?
We have records from the church cemetery, the old Congregational Church Cemetery. Those go way back, early 1800s. Those may, I'm not sure if they got into our records, because the church had them and the town took them over, or how that worked. But these are town records.
And does it show available openings?
No.
It doesn't?
No, that's just what's in there. But this was a CPA project that started out first just to get them in a safe form, because they were just in paper, notebooks. And then we took it a step further, so that this is probably one of the first communities to have this level of public records access, where you can, you know, you look at everything, you can do a search by maiden name, by date of death. So genealogies, family historians, it's got the maps, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful tool that was paid for by CPA funds. And anybody that's interested in their family history, there's tons of stuff to find there.
I use it all the time in searches. I used it yesterday for a search that came up at the Historical Society. I like it a lot.
Well, it's, it's a really nice example of what you can do with our Community Preservation Fund, so thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you. Mr. Harrow?
Do you want this? I bet you all think I'm here to talk about bike lanes. Not exactly. Firstly, Norman, thank you for your letter. That's the first letter I've had in response to one of the letters I have written about bike lanes in Hopkinton.
You're welcome.
It was a bit of a surprise. Must've taken you a lot of time. You had to do some work and some research. It was very clear, it was very understandable. I don't agree with some of it. It's based on work that was done by people with degrees in traffic management and that sort of thing, which I don't have. I got almost seven decades of bike time. I've commuted into Boston in the summertime. I commuted within Boston and Cambridge. I had 10 years in the bike industry. I did bike safety demonstrations, where to be, what's expected to be predictable, and to consider yourself invisible. And you may all know of an experiment that was done. We had a basketball game, and the subjects were to watch and count the number of times the ball was passed from player to player. And while this was going on, a person dressed in a gorilla suit walked across the court. People didn't see it. Because when we're little kids and we're first learning to cross the street, what are we told, look both ways for?
Gorillas.
Come on, play along with me here.
Cars.
Cars. Cars! So now, when we're driving down the road in our car, we don't see bicycles. When you're on a bicycle, you're invisible. To kinda continue the family history, my parents met biking in Gettysburg Battlefield. My great-great-aunt and uncle, I have a picture of them, a tintype, on their tandem tricycle. So I think about this, and I've written three letters about bike lanes in Hopkinton. I've got all this experience. And no one ever said, "Hey, Ed, what do you think about this?" In fact, when I've written, I've got no response. So my other co-conspirator in this, and you may have seen the name John Allen. I've known him since 1972. He's an MIT nerd. He's got the nerdiness to match up with anyone from Mass DOT. He's offered to come out and discuss some of the issues with these bike lanes. Offer was never taken up. John is also an expert witness. As far as bike lanes, I have a pretty John's view of bike lanes, because I had a very bad experience early on. But I have to confess, like, the bike lane in Milford is fabulous. It's what the bike lane in Hopkinton should be, not what it is. So I'm sitting here feeling like Henry Fonda. You might have seen the film Twelve Angry Men. I feel like Henry Fonda's character in Twelve Angry Men, trying to convince people that my views have some validity. So in 2011, I wrote a letter, so this was after the first meeting that we had. And a piece of paper was passed around, and they wanted our name, phone number, address, email. I said, "Oh, they're gonna be talking to us and call us in and see what we think." So I'm gonna quote from that letter. "I attended a public presentation done at the high school. When an attendance sheet was passed around, I provided my name, address, phone number, and email. I expected quite naturally to be advised of future meetings. I was not. I have not been advised of one meeting that's taken place, other than the Mass DOT meeting that was at the senior center." Now, some pushback I've gotten. I commented that people would typically be riding through at 15 to 25 miles an hour, and some exception was taken to that. What's the speed limit in downtown Hopkinton?
35 or 35.
35, I like. Yeah. It's 25?
Yeah.
So if someone is riding their bicycle through downtown Hopkinton at 25 miles an hour, keeping up with traffic, does that present a problem? Not to my way of thinking. And then I'm gonna close with this. Sometime after this is all done, there's gonna be an accident involving a bicycle between Ash Street and at least Wood Street. And when that happens, the personal injury lawyer's gonna turn to his expert witness rolodex, he's gonna turn it to B for bicycle, and the first name he's gonna see is John Allen. John Allen has all, everything that we have corresponded about in his files. He knows it. The second name he's gonna come across is Carl Barton. And I've known Carl Barton for almost as long. So, and I have, I have two handouts. And I have been to the same address in Hopkinton for 38 years. You haven't thrown me out yet, although I was thinking of that. And then, last but not least, you may all know of Mr. Wells, H.G. Wells. Every time I see an adult on a bicycle, I no longer despair for the human race.
Keep that to yourself, don't show it. You can show that to anybody you want. It's the gender.
Of course I don't.
Does this story find out, so I'd gladly tell you what this is following up.
Shall I share it?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ed. Mr. Crowley, would you like to speak to us?
Have a good day.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
I promise I will be shot.
Illegal immigrant.
Excuse me?
You're an illegal immigrant.
No. My name's Dennis Crowley. I am the co-owner of the Muffin House Cafe. Two reasons I wanted to.
Thank you for that.
We love it.
Actually, thank, I came to thank the Board and I thank the town. We have four establishments, and, and the town was very helpful. The town department heads, their staff, they weren't easy, but they were very helpful in our permitting process, and they hope, they helped us open up on time. So I thank the staff, and in particular, the welcoming from the community. Hopkinton community has been very kind to us, so we appreciate that very much. So with that, I commend the Board for meeting tonight on the seventh game of the Bruins, which had just about ready to start, so I'll make it quick. The main purpose that I'm here tonight is that either I read or I heard something about the possibility of some additional parking in the town. We are concerned, Sheldon and I, my partner, is there is limited parking as there is now. There is difficult to find additional parking for us, and I don't know whether the rumor is true, and I'm not asking for an answer tonight. I am just here to support the possibility, if there's any way, particularly with the construction that'll be coming in town. If there was any way at all that the town would consider some form of additional parking to take some relief off when the construction starts. So with that, I'll leave you as I hurry home to watch the seventh game of the Bruins. Thank you.
And it's, it's not a rumor, it is true. We are working on that, because we recognize that's real integral, really integral to the success of downtown. So you're right.
Good, I appreciate it.
And it's not often we have the Medway Group come to speak with us, but you're sort of an associate citizen of Hopkinton now. You're part of our business community.
And we enjoy seeing you and John at our regional meetings, so.
Enjoy the regional meetings.
Thank you. Thank you, folks, for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Anyone else? Mr. Foizie. Boy, a lot of takers tonight. Weeps with nobody.
Good evening. Ron Foizie, 25, Chamberlain Street. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Economic Development Council of the Chamber. And I wanted to start out with the picture of the master plan here, showing it all starts here. In less than 360 days, on April 20th next year, will be the next Boston Marathon. And the current 75% plan of the DOT is stating that they, they're likely to put shovels in the ground after the marathon next year. And if, if I reference the economic development goals of the 2017 master plan, the second bullet point says provide more downtown parking. When construction starts next year, whatever businesses we have left in downtown are likely to be decimated unless we do something dramatic to improve parking and try to keep the downtown businesses alive. So the Economic Development Council met earlier last week, and parking is our mission number one, to sustain and increase development of businesses in the downtown section. With the downtown corridor product, project coming, this is more urgent than ever before. So looking at your executive session and seeing that you're discussing a lot of those things, we're hopeful that additional parking is high up on the agenda. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All set? Okay, well, thank you, everyone. And we'll move along now, first, to our consent agenda. There are several items. The Board minutes, Board will consider approving the April 9th, 2019 Selectman's Minutes. Item two, library fund gift. The Board of Selectmen will consider accepting a $100 gift to the Hopkinton Library Gift Fund from Stephen and Mary Ancel of 25 Al Prilla Farm Road in Hopkinton. Item three, parade permit, special temporary alcohol license for the 7th Annual Evan N. Girardi Memorial 5K Run and Walk. The Board of Selectmen will consider approving a parade permit and special temporary alcohol license for Live for Evan, Inc., for the 7th Annual Evan Girardi Memorial 5K Run Walk to be held on Saturday, October 5, 2019, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., starting at the Hopkinton High School Loop Road, and ending at EMC Park. Expected number of participants, including runners and staff and volunteers, 500 to 600. Applicant is requesting a fee waiver for the special temporary alcohol license and has received approval from Parks and Rec to hold the event at EMC Park. Certificate of Insurance is pending. Entertainment application request has been withdrawn as musical music played through the speakers. No amplification used. Pepper's catering will be the caterer for the event. TIP certified service will be serving alcohol 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And item four, so if this is, if that item is approved with a parade permit, we will be, we're voting to waive the fee as well, unless that's separated out. And item four is a parade permit, 16th Annual Sharon Timlin Road Race, 5K Road Race Event, a race to cure ALS. Board of Selectmen will consider approving a parade permit for Stephanie Whalen on behalf of the Sharon Timlin Event, a race to cure ALS for five-year road case. Race to be held Saturday, June 15, 2019, at 8:30 a.m. Road closures requested for this event are for approximately 30 minutes. Hayden Road from intersection to Grove Street, intersection with Chestnut. Road race will begin at Hopkins School Road and end at the Loop Road. By Lot H, expected number of participants is 1,800. So would anyone like to pull any of those items out for separate discussion? Hearing none, I will request a motion to approve the consent agenda, the items on the congen, on the consent agenda, including a waiver of the fee for the Live for Evan event.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, that is unanimous.
Madam Chair, if I may, could we also do the same for the permit for the 101 Road Race, if they, if there's any, if there's any fees involved? I believe there isn't.
It was not requested.
Oh, yeah, there isn't, okay, there's no.
It was not requested.
Okay.
Okay. Scheduled for 6:45 was Roselli and Clark Associates Audit Report. We have a 7:30 public hearing, but we can open that and then ask to return to it. So if the, our next agenda item, let's at least open this, Roselli and Clark Associates' Audit Report. Terenzio Volpochelli of Roselli, Clark, and Associates will give a brief review of the town's 2018 financial statements, the completion of three significant capital projects, library, DPW, marathon elementary school, the impact of the adoption of new OPEB standards, and a general review of the town's financial condition. Mr. Volpochelli, welcome.
Good evening, Chairman, Person Wright, Honorable Members of the Board, Town Manager Camalo, Assistant Town Manager Lazarus. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Terenzio Volpochelli. I am your, the town's independent auditor. I was engaged in performing a financial statement audit for the year ended June 30th of 2018. That was the second year of a three-year contract with the town, and that contract was dated June 28th of 2017. In light of the time constraint, I have what we refer to as our required disclosures. I'm gonna very briefly go over it, and then this formal letter will be turned over to the town manager for your records and archives.
You can take your time, by the way. When we get to the public hearing, we can open it and then ask them to wait. So don't, don't, you're not rushing.
Okay. Madam Chair, a quick question, if I could, please, to Mr. Volpochelli?
Volpochelli, yes.
Volpochelli. Has any of what you're about to present been presented to anyone yet in Town Hall? In other words, have you provided this report to anyone yet before tonight?
The financial statements, yes. That's all, that's all been provided.
It's all the review.
Oh, sure, yes.
And this letter you're about to read, has that been provided to anybody in advance?
Uh, no, this is the first. It's just, it's just a standard disclosure.
It's in our packet, though, so it's, it's been released to the public.
Okay, good, thanks.
Because we received it in our packet, so it's out in public.
Okay. Professional standards require that we communicate the following related to our audit. Management, which includes the folks within the Board of Selectmen, is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies. The significant accounting policies used by the town are described in Note 2 of the financial statements. As we described in the notes, the town changed its accounting policies relative to its accounting for other post-employment benefits, or OPEB, in 2018. That was the result of the adoption of Government Accounting Standards Number 75. And this is something we discussed this time last year when we, when we first met with you. And as a result of the adoption, a prior period restatement was recorded, which again was discussed about a year ago with you folks. We noted no transactions entered into the town during the year for which there was a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. All significant transactions appear to have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period. Accounting estimates are an integral part of the financial statements prepared by management and are based on management's knowledge and experience about past and current events and assumptions of future events. The most sensitive estimates affecting the town's financial statements related to its pension liability, which is actuarially determined at the county retirement level. We evaluate the key factors and assumptions used to develop the pension liability, and we determine them to be reasonable in relation to the financial statements as taken as a whole. The OPEB liability, which is also actuarially determined, we evaluate the key factors and assumptions used in developing that liability, as well as management's estimate for the allowance for doubtful accounts. Those same, those same three items are also more sensitive disclosures, which are also disclosed in Notes 2, 3, and 4 of the financial statements. We're pleased to report that we encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management and performing and completing our audit. For the purposes of this discussion, a disagreement with management is a financial accounting, reporting, and auditing matter, whether or not resolved to our satisfaction. That could be significant to the financial statements or to our report. We're pleased to report there were no such disagreements that arose during the course of our audit. We requested certain representation from management. We're included in a management representation letter, which was dated on December 3rd of 2018, and that happens to be the, the final date of the financial statements. And again, the rest of it isn't very significant. This, this formal letter will be submitted to the town manager. So as has been provided to you, you have a set of financial statements. They're roughly 60 pages long. Our audit opinion is dated December 3rd of 2018. The major stories that took place in 2018, the fiscal year 2018, surrounded the completion of the library, the DPW, and the elementary school. Those are three major capital projects. They all concluded right around the end of the year, or at some point during 2018. In connection with that, you ended up selling roughly $25 million of general obligation bonds to finance those capital projects, and you received about a $1.7 million premium associated with that transaction. The other big story for the year was the adoption of the OPEB standard. And this is something that has been discussed for many years within this industry. It tends to be the most commonly discussed topic during my post-audit conferences. The adoption of this OPEB standard resulted in a restatement to the prior period of roughly, I'm having a hard time reading. roughly, I'm having a hard time reading, $11 million, or $10 million, where it's hard to read. There were several deficits in capital projects. At the end of the year, every one of them was covered by a ban, which is what's required by the Commonwealth. And, um, the finance department and accounting department went through a, a number of personnel changes. We're pleased to see that the town was very proactive and really forward-thinking in the way that it selected how it was going to replenish that talent. It's not typical to see a quote-unquote CFO in a town structure, somebody who's going to be providing a lot of FPNA and strategic direction, so that's quite refreshing to see. Financially, the town still maintains its AAA rating from S&amp;P. That was last affirmed in November of 2017. The unassigned fund balance in the general fund is $8.8 million. When you take the assigned and unassigned fund balances and you compare that to the 2018 general fund expenditures, that results in what's referred to as a reserve ratio of about 11 percent, and that puts you in what S&amp;P would call a strong position. Included in that amount was roughly $3.4 million of stabilization funds, which are, for GAAP accounting purposes, included in the general fund. For the results of operations, property taxes continue to make roughly 60 percent of your revenues year-to-year, and education expenses are approximately three-quarters of all of your expenditures. 71 percent in 2018, 74 percent in 2017. We're pleased to note that the town established an OPEB trust fund at the end of 2018. It has roughly $2 million put aside. Previously, that was in a stabilization fund. Your actuary estimates that that puts that fund at roughly 3 percent funding at June 30th of 2018. To put that in perspective, that puts the community in roughly the top 10 percentile of the state as far as funding ratios. That percentage is not terribly scientific because at this point in time, there is not a central repository for all of the communities in the state. That threshold is based off of a single actuary who represents roughly, well, the largest actuary in the state, and based on their population of, of communities, which is assumed to be a representative sample of the rest of the state, you would say that the community is in the top 10 percentile. Many communities haven't put any monies aside. That in a nutshell is the financial condition of the town. One thing I failed to mention is, again, the largest obligations to the town is the town's long-term debt, its net OPEB liability, its net pension liabilities. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns about the financial statements themselves?
I had one question about what you said about the stabilization at 3 percent, putting us on, up in the top 10 percent, because I, I understood that the recommendations, I thought it was from DOR, was that communities have 5 percent, that we were low.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, is right now, as it currently is constituted, the funds that you've put aside versus what your actuary has estimated, your actuary liability to be, you're roughly 3 percent funded.
On the OPEB, not.
On the OPEB.
Oh, no, no, I thought you were talking about stabilization when you said 3 percent.
No, 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 that was the OPEB fund, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, okay, because I thought you said stabilization.
I may have, I apologize if I did.
And I thought, I, I, so our stabilization goal, I think, still is 5 percent, isn't it? Or not at that?
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, it's still 5 percent.
Yes, yes, and again, you have about $3.4 million in there for that.
Our accountant nodded back there.
Yeah.
So, we've got a ways to go on that, at least.
Well, budgets keep going up so much, and 5 percent keeps getting added, I get to.
I know. Thank you.
Madam Chair, so you mentioned your education expenses were approximately 70-some percent. Can you just expand on that a little bit further?
Well, that would be all of the costs of the personnel, all the pupil costs. That is a fully burdened expense figure that I gave you, so that's also going to include allocations of insurances, your net OPEB liability and pensions liability.
So, a lot of other stuff besides our general operating budget.
That is really based on a full accrual accounting, which would be very similar to, say, a company like an EMC, well, how they would report.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
Because we typically run about 55 to 57 percent education.
Sure.
Forty-whatever on, you know, general government in our operating budget annually.
And in that number, you wouldn't include your health insurance or whatnot, that would be a separate line item, yes.
I was wondering that, too, that's why.
Right, because when we put, when we put all the benefits and everything, the, the town side of it gets a heck of a lot smaller.
Yeah, because I think out of an 80 million budget, I think it's like 60, 38-something and.
Yeah, once again, that's a fully, that's a fully burdened number, yeah.
Yeah.
In addition, we issued a management letter, also dated December 3rd of 2018. We noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We also noted that from our initial management letter that we issued January 26th of 2018, the town made a number of improvements, which is actually somewhat remarkable in light of the, the transition in turnover within your accounting and finance departments. There are still a, a number of areas that would require some attention to, and again, that's, that's to be expected particularly with the transition in turnover, but for the most part, we conducted our, our financial statement in a very timely and efficient manner. In fact, I think we lost two days because of the fire alarm and whatnot in here. We were still able to, to complete our audit on time, on schedule, and that's essentially a testament to the quality of the records that were provided to us. So, thank you.
Really quick question. How would you say the education expenses all burned up like that, how do they compare against other communities around the state? Is there a state average that?
I'm unaware of a state average, but if I had to compare, they're all over 50 percent. I haven't, I haven't seen, I haven't seen a community that's under 50 percent. They tend to be right around two-thirds to three-quarters. So, you're, you're kind of right in that ballpark on a full, on a fully burden. Again, that even includes depreciation expense of the buildings and that, that figure.
And how, how often are these audits done? Because I don't recall you coming before as before.
Well, this, I, I came last year at the, uh, the cable, the table company.
At the HCM TV station.
Yes, yes.
I wasn't recalling.
Previously, we were not engaged as your auditor, so I can't speak to that.
But, but this is, this is annual.
He's got a very common name, you probably.
(laughing).
Yes, yes, so, we, you know, we perform these financial statement audits annually. It's a matter of good governance that's actually required because of, certainly because of the debt load that you folks have, as well as the federal funds that you receive as part of our audit. Also, we do what's called a single audit to comply with the OMB requirements surrounding, principally surrounding your educational grants.
Mr. Camalo, are you happy?
No, um, in fact, in summary, we have had a very productive relationship with Terenzio's firm, focusing on three goals. Number one, bringing an independent eye to really look at our accounting system. Number two, using this process to educate the public, and that's why he's here in front of the board, and we're making most of the information from the audit available online. Then number three, the recommendations that come from this process have been very helpful to the community, and in that regard, we're also looking for transfer of knowledge from his team to our team, and I think that's, that's started him off very well now.
I would just add one more to that, because anytime you bring an external auditor in, it's all about material findings, and there were no material findings. That's big, that's news, and we expect that, but it's important, I think, that everybody understands that.
Thank you very much for your time and for the good report.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Right back on time, too.
Yeah, we'll look through that consent agenda, fortunately.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna just kind of spin our wheels for about 30 seconds here. Just gonna wait a couple more seconds till it's 7:30 to open the public hearing. You had 7:30?
7:30, 19:30.
Clock's not right, okay. Yeah, we're being 7:30 according to Mr. Tedstone.
My phone says 7:30.
We will open a public hearing for the Entertainment Carnival Sunday License from the Hoppington Parent Teacher Association slash Fiesta Shows. Welcome. The board of selectmen will hold a public hearing relative to an Entertainment Carnival Sunday License Application received from Erin Graziano on behalf of the Hoppington Parent Teacher Association for a Fiesta Show Carnival to be held in the Hoppington High School parking lot. Applicant is requesting the following event hours. Thursday, June 20, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Friday, June 21st, from 6:00 to 10:30 p.m. Saturday, June 22nd, from 1:00 to 10:30 p.m. And Sunday, June 23rd, from 1:00 to 9:00 p.m. Setup would begin on Thursday, June 17, 2019, to allow the state time to license before opening. J.C. Parmenter has granted permission to allow Carnival crews to set up sleeping quarters until school lets out for the summer. The trailers will move to school grounds on the afternoon of the last day of school. Expected number of attendees could be 375 to 475 at any one time. Welcome, Ms. Graziano.
Move to public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, unanimous, public hearing is open. Welcome, and, Ms.
I brought Mr. EJ Dean from Fiesta Shows.
Fiesta, yeah. Welcome, Mr. Dean. So, I think we've been down this road before, but tell us your plans.
So, this is our third year, and last year, even despite having rainouts on two of the biggest population days, we did really well. We brought in about $9,000 for our schools, and we are here again to ask permission to use the school grounds in order to hold the carnival. From, from what I heard, and I do, do post-meetings with all of those involved, the schools, the police, I didn't hear of any issues last year. Things seemed to go very smoothly, and we're hoping for a smooth, another smooth year. I did list the hours per what the carnival typically runs. Last year, we did shorten those by a bit for the neighbors, and we are willing to do that again this year as kind of a show of good faith to help make it a little bit less cumbersome on them.
I'm sorry, could you say that part again?
I listed the hours based on what the carnival runs every year, you know, when they go to any, any town, but last year, we did shorten those hours, and we are willing to shorten those again this year, you know, for the neighbors.
Yeah, I, I noticed that last year's permit did not have, went, go to 10:30, it went to 10 on those numbers.
Yes.
So, that's up for discussion. So, questions from the board members?
I have no questions. Uh, nope, just, well, the only question I have is, are you planning this year to do the same thing that you did last year, where you put the more noisy rides, you know, more proximal to the building, and the quieter rides proximal to the home?
Correct. All the design changes we made to accommodate the neighbors, we have all intention to do that again.
Okay, thank you.
Did we learn anything from last year? I remember the first year, we made some big changes like that.
Yep.
Did anything else? Are there any new changes that we did, that we learned last year that we're incorporating that can, again, help any, any other neighborhood concerns or concerns that you had to ask the?
Nothing new arose last year. We had talked at the meeting prior to it that we were going to put up stanchions along the highway, I'm sorry, along the road, but when we talked with the police, they were just concerned about that causing issues for foot traffic, even outside of carnival hours. So, they stationed a police car over there. It, it's very dark, there's not a lot of streetlights in that area, so, um, that was, that was the way we solved that issue to kind of keep it safe and also to minimize the foot traffic in front of the neighbors.
I actually saw that whole thing unfold, and a collaborative effort between you and the police chief, and it was taken care of on the spot, so that was, that was well done.
Thank you.
Right, so, and I do.
I did have a couple things. So, last year, there was a concern about the noise from the neighbors. I was just wondering, did you talk to the neighbors, and then if you're planning this year, did you bring them into a collaborative?
I, I didn't talk with them personally, but I do send out the forum notification and per the license, but I haven't spoken with them personally. I actually did see one of the neighbors at the event, and I was able to work with the carnival to just give them free passes. She said that her, her son had been sick, and he had been dying to go to the carnival, and so finally, on the last day, he was well enough, and they had just walked over, and I gave them a bunch of passes to enjoy the rides on us.
Excellent. Well, it's a fun event, I mean, I know, I know my kids had fun there, too. There was other, one other, well, one other concern that I recall from last year was that some of the ride operators smoking on the sidewalks, like going across the street and smoking. Is that something that's part of our protocol, where that's not going to be allowed, or?
Yep, that was handled last year, and I had no follow-up to that. I had no issues reported, so.
Yeah, I believe that was originally brought up from two years ago, when they were going over to Parmenters. So, we made, we made changes before last year that I believe didn't have any further concerns.
That's all, thank you.
Well, I, I know this is a pub, a posted public hearing, and there was a better notification as well, so, and I, and I am going to turn to the, those in attendance to see if they have some input as well, so that if there are community needs, well, I, I want to ask you just, just one thing. So, I think you must have been referencing this earlier. I was looking at the conditions that were written in last year's, and Maria in our office just simply put the same conditions on, but I think we want to change it, because last year, item five talked about barricades erected on the easterly side of Hayden or across the street from the carnival in order to prevent use of the sidewalk in front of residences. That was because of the residences, but at the time, I remember, we, the police determined they really, they couldn't block the public way because it's a sidewalk, so.
Right.
They made it, I see the chief is here, and we were going to work through how we were to this year, because he made some different accommodations to keep the sidewalk open, but to have it patrolled or something so that carnival-goers could have the access, but the issue of other people, their staff members hanging out in front of the houses would not be. So, um, Chief, can I just ask you, how did you address that? And then we can figure out how to word this in the condition so that it, because this is not a correct condition. We, we don't want to say barricade, she'll be erected. What should we?
As, uh, she mentioned earlier, we worked that out on the fly. Last year, we saw an issue with that, and basically, because of the dim-litted area, we actually had a cruiser in that area with one of the detail officers, and we'll keep up, a, a person just assigned to that area to keep an eye on it, as well as last year.
So, this condition about barricades doesn't apply. Is there anything, any wording you think should address that, or we'll just understand with, you're working with the police, that they will?
Yeah, we, we don't want any barricades that would affect the pedestrian flow and cause a danger to them walking in the road.
So, that'll just be part of your regular coordination with the police to address that, that kind of?
Absolutely.
Critical area. Okay, all right.
No, I have something.
Oh, Mr. Tedstone?
This is kind of my thing. How did we do last year with all the quarries?
Uh, we had no issues. We verified through photo IDs, through their credentials, along with the listed quarry checks that were provided through the company, and everyone matched up, and there was no issues. And we'll continue to do the same thing as this year. We've already been provided the list of people that have been quarried.
So, this being a public hearing, are there members of the public who would like to weigh in? Let's come up and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Sue McCarthy. I live at 22 Winter Street. I am here because I oppose the. I am here because I oppose the carnival. I had something happen to me. I wish I had come last year, actually, to the hearing. I found out that the carnival, I went to the carnival two years ago, and I, I didn't realize that it was actually coming back, but I'm a little bit out of my comfort zone because I don't generally do this, so I wrote down what I wanted to say. So, I'm gonna read that. So, "I am here tonight to share my experience at the HPTA carnival two years ago, hoping you will deny the application for the carnival going forward. In 2017, I attended the carnival with my two children, who were aged 10 and 12. While I was there, I was hit in the head by a large, approximately six-foot-by-eight-foot aluminum sign that was not secured properly. A gust of wind blew the unsecured sign into my head, resulting in a concussion. I went to my primary care, physician documented. I did go end up at the doctor because of not feeling well after, and I was diagnosed with a concussion. It is out of luck that the sign did not hit either of my children or any of the other children that were around when the sign blew into me. After the incident, I shared what happened with the HPTA, the town manager, the school committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the superintendent." All done via email. There was no representative up from the HPTA or the town at the carnival when I actually was hit with the sign, so there was no one there. So, I did this all through email. As upsetting as it was to me that, as I was watching my kids ride rides around the carnival, that a huge sign hit me in the head, I found the email response I received from all, including the organization that I was a member of, to be lacking in genuine concern and really to be just as upsetting to me as the actual situation. At no time did anyone reach out to me with a phone call or even in person to find out how I was doing or exactly what happened. The carnival may be considered an important fundraiser, and I love the PTA. I have nothing but great things to say about the PTA. There are wonderful opportunities that our children have in our schools because of the funding that they have, or that they, the raise, the fundraising that they do. However, there is a moral responsibility that comes along with attaching the PTA's name or even the town of Hopkinton with any event. To me, this responsibility includes investigating any incident involving a personal injury. I've never talked to anyone, I've actually never had a conversation with anyone from the PTA, from the town, from the school committee, from the superintendent, about what actually happened to me that day. I've talked to my family and my friends about it, no one else in town. And I actually have pictures of the sign that hit me, so if anyone's interested. Although, some of you, I think, I don't know who was on the committee when I said that, but anyways. The only reason my husband and I attended that carnival, we, we actually don't go to carnivals because we don't feel that they're safe, but we did allow our kids, and we brought our kids to this carnival because it was a fundraiser for the PTA, which is an organization that we do support. So, anyways, I was surprised and disappointed last year, and honestly, I guess I was a little naive. I thought that I had passed on what, to me, was something horrific and something that was avoided, someone being seriously injured, to the people that I needed to pass it on to, but apparently, I didn't, because, you know, the carnival did come to town last year. So, I decided at that point that I would just move on, and if it came back this year, I would come and say something. So, here I am. I am skeptical and find it somewhat short-sighted that the PTA or town feels they can guarantee the safety of a traveling carnival. There are so many moving parts. I was hit in the head by a sign that was leaning against a cart that should have been, that should have been secured. Someone just forgot to secure it. So, it looked like all of the other signs at the carnival. You could not tell that it was any different. It looked exactly like all the other ones did. As a society, it seems we react when there's a tragedy, ignoring the red flags that are generally there all along. As a town, I believe we can do better. We owe it to ourselves and our children. My hope is you will consider what happened to me as a huge red flag, and will deny the HPTA application for the carnival to return to Hopkinton, or honestly, the PTA itself will do it. The safety of all who attend any event is much more important than the amount of money raised, and I question the town can 100% guarantee the safety of everyone at that carnival. The day I attended that carnival, it was not safe, and that sign could have not been secured. I went on Sunday. It probably wasn't secured Saturday, who knows? I find, who knows? But you can speculate a little on that one, I guess, right? There are many other options for fundraisers. My hope is the PTA will explore other options. Thank you for listening to me. It was hard for me to come, it's hard for me to say this and get up in front of this to do, and I truly do love the PTA. I really do. I feel better having spoken about my experience to those who are responsible for bringing the carnival to town and ultimately responsible for the safety of all those who attend, including many families from Hopkinton and a lot of young children, so. So, I'm hoping that you'll consider that. So, thank you.
That's what, that was the reason for my first question, was, you know, because we learned a lot from the, from the '17, and then we, then they moved, they moved things, changed smokers, did better quarry checks, and that's why I asked, did we learn anything from '18? And, 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 you know, the, the way I try to look at things is, you know, can, can things be improved to try and make them, and make them as safe and as entertaining as possible?
I, no, go ahead. No, go ahead, I interrupted.
Yeah, because, you know, it's, it is a big fundraiser for them, and last, you know, in '17, there were a lot of problems, and last year was a, was a very tough decision, you know, and putting all the conditions that the chair was, was speaking of, to try and make sure that we mitigated as many as possible. And that's why I wanted to see, you know, what other, what other issues came up last year, and I was, and I was happy to hear that there weren't, and any ones that did come up were mitigated immediately. You know, I'm sure that, I don't remember the email coming through, I'm sorry, I was, I was on the board in '17.
That's right. I have all the emails. I have all the correspondence. I have everything with me. I have pictures of the sign.
And, and I think it's very important for, for the operator to know what happened to you and to see the sign again to make sure it works, but that's my thought.
I guess for me, it's the unknowns. So, at that carnival, that particular one, it was that the sign wasn't secured, but how can you guarantee at a carnival where there are so many different things that could possibly happen that everything is safe? So, if you feel, you can 100% guarantee that, that that is safe, then that's true. But I actually, the reason why I came here selfishly is now it's off of me. I told everyone my story, and you guys can do what you want to do.
I just want to mention, I, I remember hearing about this a couple years ago. I, I knew that, you know, the medical part had been handled in one way, that you were fortunately not more seriously injured, but, you know, concussion is not, is not, is not funny by any means, but I thoroughly thought or believed that it would have been addressed or, you know, you would have been reached out to more than you were and by someone in the town, so for that, for that, we apologize. I guess I just have to say, and I don't know what Fiesta Shows' track record is, I am under the assumption, because we've had them a couple years, that they have, as carnival groups go, have had a good record of producing a quality event. I do think, and I don't mean this to sound callous, but it is very difficult with anything in life to, to give 100% guarantee ever that nothing is going to happen, the TV above, you know, it's human error, if something's not tightened, or, I mean, all kinds of things do happen. I guess we would look to the record of the operator, you know, have there been equipment issues in the past? Certainly, when something is put up and taken down, as a, as a traveling carnival is, there's more opportunity, but it is, I think it is very difficult to guarantee, to say we can, we guarantee 100% on anything that's, you know, that's kind of the way the world is, but anyway, I am, I am very sorry if you didn't get an adequate response from the town. I think there were other members that wanted to say something.
So, yeah, I wasn't there, I wasn't tightening the bolts. I was on the board at the time, but I just want to say we're sorry for that, so.
Oh, you don't have to apologize.
I don't have, I don't have any excuses. I've had a concussion or two in my life as well, I know what they're like, and I'm very sorry that that happened at a, at such a great, you know, the potential to be a great event for our town and our community. So, that's all I have, is I'm sorry for that.
Oh, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Thank you for coming.
Are there any other public comments?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Martin Bays. My address is 106 Hayden Row. I'm the immediate abbot to the Art Center, so I would be one of the two abotters closest to the site of the school property. I very much support the event, but I would ask that, I think similarly in the previous year, that the, the ending time of the event is a little bit of a problem for me. Obviously, if there's a way to move the hours, to shift them towards the center of the day, particularly at the weekend, looking at the hours, I would, I would much prefer it if it did not go beyond 9:30 on Thursday and Friday and not be on 10 o'clock on Saturday. The other request, I don't think it's a reasonable one to make, but if anybody can figure out how to have them play a different song on each day. I would say that after the first day, it was okay. After the second day, it was marginal, and by Sunday, I would not describe my reactions as positive. So, if I hear, I hear positive feedback from behind. Thank you very much in anticipation for that. So, that, I think that summarizes my comments, basically very much in support of it, but anything we could do to shift the, the hours somewhat earlier, with the, with the present hours, obviously, it's ending significantly after sunset. I don't think it would make a significant difference to the funding if that was, if the hours were shifted slightly. I'm sure people would, would accommodate that, and it certainly would help the abotters greatly. Thank you.
It's like the ice cream truck with my kids coming through the neighborhood, the entertainer.
Well, I know, Erin, you had put in 10:30, and you were certainly amenable to using the hours that we had last year, and it is kind of one of those situations where the school is right in a residential neighborhood, so part of making this whole thing work is obviously understanding, you know, we're right in the neighborhood and we need to be good neighbors. So, I certainly would recommend going back to last year's hours of not later than 10. I would imagine that when the stop time arrived, it's not like all the participants just evaporate. I mean, people generally quietly clear out after a while, and so there's some shutdown activities, so, you know, I'm sure the neighborhood is feeling it somewhat beyond the official closing time. What would your thoughts be about having a 9:30 on those Thursday and Friday and maybe the 10 on Saturday?
Our normal protocol is, depending on the size of the crowd, anywhere from 30 minutes to an hour before the closing time to stop selling tickets to all the amusement rides, mainly so that they can be used up and, as you had said, leave on a, on a timely basis and hopefully not, so not have a mass exodus, you know, at the closing time and everyone leaving at once. I think, you know, as we, you know, try to coordinate between, you know, the police details, obviously, you know, the crowds for revenue purposes, to balance it out. Closing at 9:30 would typically be a little earlier, or, you know, certainly from what we're, what we're used to. You know, I would like to, if possible, you know, go back to last year's hours of operation and again, assess it, you know, certainly with the neighborhood, and if it, you know, is, if it continues to be a chronic issue, then certainly, we would have to figure out a long-term address for it. But I think making the concessions for last year because of the neighborhood concerns, you know, based on what we normally do, and if, you know, we can certainly coordinate with the police, you know, detail that's on-site, that, you know, if we need to tailback our ticket sales a little bit earlier because of, you know, crowds, to make sure that, you know, they leave, you know, orderly so that there's not a large influx at the closing hour, we can certainly make, you know, quick adjustments in that manner.
Yes, sir.
So, part of the shift from, historically, carnivals would open at noon time in years past, and moving to the 1 o'clock was just based on, on the crowds themselves, that most people don't typically come out till earlier in the afternoon, you know, like the 2 o'clock timeframe, so us opening at 1 is just to, you know, get everything, you know, operational and to be ready, but typically, you know, on Saturdays with different sports, things that are going on in the morning, certainly, you know, church events on Sunday and other activities is why we moved to the 1 o'clock as opposed to going earlier, was just to accommodate other community activity.
It would, it would seem to me that both Thursday and Friday, where it's starting at 6, if you were to start at 5:30, you'd kind of be into conflicting with some of the rush hour traffic possibly up on, up on Hayden Row that might-
I'm not saying it's just earlier on the weekends, so the weekend is the-
It's just the weekend. So, you would advocate Saturday instead of starting at 1, starting at 12:30? And ending at 9:30?
Madam Chair, I would suggest we wrap up public comment before we deliberate times that we're gonna have open and close, please.
Are there other members of the public who would like to speak?
Madam Chair, I move the, we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, that is unanimous. Okay, so the public hearing is closed. That means we can't take new information from the public. We will discuss amongst ourselves and with the applicant. What is the board's pleasure?
To the chair. Quick question. From a fundraising perspective, do you find that things are dwindling down where that last half hour is not quite as significant as the earlier times?
I would say that the last half hour is more significant, similar to what EJ was saying. As a parent, I wait, when my kids were young, I waited to feed them lunch before going out for an afternoon event, and then the older kids, you get the younger crowd earlier in the afternoon, they go home for dinner or naptime, and then the older kids come out, and it's the older kids that typically stay until the later hours. So, I, I could see his point as to why they had moved the times back, just from a parent, like he said, Saturdays are soccer days, so, you know, you run, you get all that done, you go home, you change, everybody eats, and then you head out to whatever, you know, fun thing you have planned that day. So, I would probably see the later hour being more substantial than the afternoon, but we are willing, we understand that this is an inconvenience, and it is so great for our organization, and it has been very well received by the town. I volunteer a lot in the schools, and this time of year, the kids start saying, "Ms. Graziano, when's the carnival coming? Is the carnival coming back?" They love it, but, so we, we want to find a- Um, but, so we, we want to find a balance, or help to find a balance.
So, Madam Chair, a couple of thoughts, one, um, you know, some of the comments, actually from a couple of different discussions we've had tonight, from individuals with some passionate concerns, they're very valid concerns, as those individuals presented them, I think. Um, but our job is to take those concerns and weigh them against the seventeen thousand five hundred other people and their concerns. And I think that's where it gets a little bit tough, but that's the job. Um, I, I do recall the incident.
Oh, yeah.
I do recall some emails back and forth, so I'm a little surprised that there wasn't some level of communication, because I do remember seeing some level of communication about this. So, maybe that was amongst us, and I don't recall the details of it, but it was something that came up, and it was something that I thought had been addressed to some extent, obviously not to the satisfaction of the resident, and that is unfortunate. Um, but I do think in general, uh, the carnival brings a lot of positive energy to the community. Uh, it is Americana 101, it goes all over, goes on all over across America, and, uh, goes all, goes on across America every summer, and as a kid I remember them, and I fully support moving forward with this year's license.
Is that a motion?
Uh, well, if, if I may, um, to the chair, I, I think that if, if the proponent is not adverse to the, at least moving it back to ten o'clock from the ten thirty, let's just, let's just, you know, let's start there. Um, and, and then, we can further negotiate, but let's just, you know, if there is a motion, let's at least start it at, at, at ten as opposed to the ten thirty.
To the chair. Is it possible to maybe just turn it down a little bit when you get, when it gets later? Turn the music down, just for respect for the neighbors, so it's not quite as loud?
So, and, as, as to what one of the, the, the abbot had mentioned about the music and also its repetition, one of the things that we've added is a computerized sound system, so one, um, the music changes so that it's not repetitious day in and day out, but also because it's a universal sound system, one click of a button can take it all down. So, absolutely, you know, at the nine o'clock mark, we can turn off the sound system so that that last, you know, time is just simply the using of whatever tickets are left, um, you know, as the crowd disperses. Um, that there's no issue in just turning that off that easily, so yes, it can be accommodated.
Okay, I mean, I'm thinking more, I mean, as a, as a carnival goer, you, you kind of want some of the noise, some of the-
Well, it is part of the activity, but certainly to address, you know, to try and, you know, help the abotters certainly is, you know, with that later time, it's, we can be accommodating.
So, would we be amenable to maybe turning it down at nine o'clock, um, or nine thirty, so, to accommodate some of the noise concerns?
Maybe at nine thirty you make an announcement, you know, the carnival's closing in a half an hour, please, you know, use up your tickets, and maybe you shut the music off at nine thirty, so it gets a little quiet and people get the, get the message.
Yeah, so what we can do, what we can do is, that way, you know, depending on the crowd, we'll time it right with the tickets, because the tickets would be pulled at least a half hour, but in the circumstances, if we were to pull them at forty-five, we'll do this, we'll mirror the sound to the same ticket policy, which would at least be, which would at least be a half hour.
Somehow I don't think that the music is the bane of the, of the complaint. There's, you know, metal crashing on metal and people screaming, and, uh, you know, you, you only do so much, we understand that, but the fact that you're amenable to do whatever is, we're, you know, certainly-
So we're going to limit fun at nine thirty, at nine fifteen?
No, you just start to power it down a little bit.
Yeah, that's, that's one, yeah, if I may, to the chair, maybe, you know, at nine o'clock, kick it down to seventy-five percent, nine thirty, twenty-five percent, and then, and then keep going down.
And make an announcement or something.
Yeah, yeah, has P A system with it, so.
Okay, so it looks like we're talking about returning some last year's hours, which were the Thursday, six to ten, the Friday, six to ten, uh, the Saturday, one to ten, and the Sunday, one to nine, with the understanding that, um, in the last, on, on, um, Friday and Saturday nights, in the last hour before closing, you will make efforts to start to reduce the level of music and sound in that, over that last hour.
Certainly.
We are going to remove item five from last year, which mentioned barricades being erected. That's going to just be handled as part of your interactions with the police in, in the kind of arrangements you make. So, the other conditions that we had last year, all carnival employees shall be Cory and Suri certified in accordance with master general law, supported by the police chief. The generator shall be located as far from residences as possible. The mobile housing sleeping quarters location shall be coordinated with town officials and should comply with zoning requirements. And rides shall be as far back from the street as possible, with the loudest being located in the interior closest to the school building. That's what we had last year with those accommodations for the noise and the hours.
Yes.
Are there other conditions the board wishes to change, add from last year?
I was impressed with the length that the, the, um, company went to, to accommodate the, um, the meeting that we had last year and the neighbors' concerns. I was very impressed by the, uh, the length at which you addressed those, and the fact that they're not up here again, uh, is, is pretty substantial, speaks, speaks volumes, because those neighbors are not ones to hold their tongue if they have an issue. So, uh, so congratulations to you guys on that.
Thank you, we're guests in fifty-eight communities over the course of the summer, so we always try to be, be the best neighbor that we can.
Guest, none better than this one, I'll tell you that.
Just one question, um, if there's an issue that comes up, is there a point person, a person to call, or does one just call the police, or how, how would there be a contact made if someone was aware? Like, I got a call from a neighbor or someone about a problem.
Do you want a carnival point person or a P T A point person? We, we, um, whoever is managing the carnival on site always has my cell phone number, and I always have their cell phone number, and we do communicate often between us, and I know last year you reached out to me, and-
Right.
Um, I actually happened to be standing with Brendan, and we quickly made, you know, arrangements to fix the issue, so, um-
So I think it would be good, because the selectmen are the ones that get the calls sometimes.
Yep.
In addition to the police and fire chief having contact information, if the town officials had a point person number that if we receive some information, there's someone we can call who is on site or able to deal with someone on site to get it addressed. Mr. Kamala?
For the board's contest consideration, I suggest that we have contact information for individuals, both on the P T A as well as the carnival.
Yes.
Yes. I have just one other comment, um, question, I noticed in your application, it talked about Fiesta shows contributing like five hundred dollars if there was additional parking lot cleaning required. And I think last year what we asked was that that money be, or that check be issued and held in reserve, as opposed to trying to, having to ask for it afterwards, and then we're discussing does not, does so, does not, does so. Um, I, I would like to see those funds issued and held, and then refunded by the town.
Not a problem.
Alright, um, Mr. Continu?
Would you like me to make a motion?
Um, I would like you to make a motion to changes the hours to ten on those two nights, and also accommodate Friday and Saturday, even in the last hour, reduce, gradually reducing the sound systems.
I'd like to propose a motion to approve the entertainment license, a carnival license and a Sunday license for the H P A, H P T A Fiesta Show Carnival on Thursday, June twentieth, and that's from six to ten P M. Friday, June twenty-first, six to ten P M. Saturday, June twenty-second, one to ten P M. And Sunday, June twenty-third, one to nine P M. And on Friday and Saturday of the last hour, the sound system volume will be gradually reduced.
There's second?
Second.
Alright. Motion has been made and accepted, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that is unanimous, okay, thank you very much.
And please check all the signs and, and everything else, and just do a double check, just to make sure, so, you know, every year or something.
No guarantees in life, but we can certainly make every effort.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Alright, um, F Y twenty budget update. The town manager will update the board of selectmen on the fiscal year twenty budget, including the appropriations committee hearings. The chair of the appropriations committee will be present to discuss specific budget issues. So, Mr. Kamala, and I see Mr. Conley is here as well to give us the final rundown, because tonight's the night.
Um, through the chair, there are two changes to the budget that I would like to report to the board, since the last update to, to the board was made by the town manager. Um, on the operating budget side, the park and rec subsidy has been reduced from one hundred and fifty-seven thousand down to one forty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-one. And then in terms of capital projects, you'd recall the board had a discussion regarding the request to fund phase two of the sidewalk master plan. Subsequent to the board's discussion of this request, we have also met with the appropriations committee. I received specific feedback from the appropriations committee. Whilst my understanding is that the appropriations committee does support the request as presented, taking into account the responses or the feedback that we received from some members of the appropriations committee, as well as the feedback from the board of selectmen, we're now proposing to reduce that request down to eight hundred thousand.
It's down from what?
One point five million.
One point five to eight hundred thousand.
On sidewalks?
Yes. And specifically, we eliminated, I believe, and John is here to provide details, we eliminated two sidewalks that were of concern to the board. One was the West Main, and the other one was Me-
Wild Road.
Yeah, Wild Road.
Again, we cut that sidewalk out again two years in a row?
To nowhere.
No, you're downtown, you're downtown. No, I'm talking about West Main Street.
No, no, it was Main, it was-
It's West Main Street and Wild Road.
West Main Street gets cut every single year. The other side of town, we, we're buying another, another tractor so the downtown area can get cleared to get the snow blow, it can get the snow off the sidewalks, and all they do in, in, uh, up in my, my town, the side of the world, is they put the snow on the sidewalks, and wherever there are, happen to be sidewalks, any of the main roads. There are no sidewalks coming down West Main Street at all, no way to get, no way to get underneath the four ninety-five.
Are we in deliberation mode, Madam Chair?
Sorry.
Might as well be.
No, but, but, but I wouldn't, no, but, but, if I may, through the chair, could I ask, could I ask what changes in the budget, if you just go through the changes from the one that we signed off two weeks ago? Uh, the, the, just, just list those things, because, you know, what, what other things got cut out so other things can get in?
Again, the, the two changes that I identified are the changes that we are reporting to the board. These were not, um, the, the, the changes were not done to accommodate any new things in the budget. They were simply, the adjustments were made in response to the feedback that we received, as well as in terms of the park and rec, um, is, the changes based on the, um, the, the accounting process that we've put in place, um, for the enterprise living.
Well, I remember the sidewalk discussion, and I, I, I'm glad Wild Road is gone, because we talked about it as kind of being a sidewalk to nowhere. I'm all for sidewalks, but I'm all for spending our money on the areas where the need is. But I didn't remember controversy over the West Main Street at all. I remembered Mr. Tedstone and I both discussed the Hayden Row, because there was going to be sidewalks, there was already sidewalk on one side of the road, and we said, why do we need sidewalks on both sides of the road where there are parts of town that don't have any sidewalk that needed? So, I mean, I don't mind reducing it, I wasn't opposed to the, the amount that we had initially, but my issue was putting, was spending it where it's needed, and I don't recall that West, that West Main Street was the problem. I thought it was Hayden Row.
Agreed.
Again, as I said in my remarks, we took into account feedback from the board of selectmen, as well as the appropriations committee. Absolutely correct that the selectmen were in support of the West Main Street. The feedback that we received from some members of the appropriation committee was not in favor of that West Main Street sidewalk.
Excuse me?
Can we just get some facts here real quick?
Yeah.
If I could, parks and rec, are they okay with this minor reduction? The Parks and Rec Commission elected officials, our colleagues.
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you, so we're all good there, right?
That's fine.
Sidewalks, what sidewalk are we talking about eliminating on West Main Street? Give me the facts.
Connecting Downey Street.
But there is sidewalks on West Main Street, so where on West Main Street are we talking here?
It's connecting one-ten and the, and the, and the Muse to Price Chopper.
Can I ask Mr. Westling, please, where are we talking about?
Good evening, through the chair, I'll break down the four, if that'll be helpful. Um, the West Main Street specifically is four thousand two hundred feet of sidewalk that stretches from approximately Lumber Street to Downey Street, and that is nine hundred sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, hold on right there, is there any sidewalk on either side of West Main Street in that area right now?
No, sir.
So I run through there all the time, um, and it's underneath four ninety-five, it's underneath the bridge, there's, there's space, but not a sidewalk. And not on either side. Alright, thank you, what else?
Uh, the Wild Road section was two hundred feet, and that is forty thousand dollars. Hayden Row Street, which would extend down the easterly side from EMC Park to Chestnut Street, three thousand eight hundred feet, at seven hundred thousand dollars. And the last one is Wood Street, which would run on the easterly side from Proctor Street to the, uh, to the new D P W building, and extend to the sidewalks that we constructed in front of the church, and that's at a hundred thousand.
And those last two are still in, it's those first two we mentioned.
Correct.
How long is the Proctor Street span?
Excuse me?
How long is the Wood Street from Proctor to the D P W?
Five hundred feet.
Five hundred.
So if I could, Madam Chair, West Main Street, if you put a sidewalk in, you are still crossing four ninety-five entrances and exits.
You are.
So, we're putting a sidewalk in a pretty dangerous part of town, I mean, literally, I run through there all the time. And, you know, you've got to run fast, which I don't do anymore, uh, to avoid getting hit. Putting a sidewalk in there is not going to change that, it's just going to be a marking in the road, and people are still going to come flying down those ramps, so that's a very expensive, dangerous sidewalk.
But it does not give the people in that Lumber Street area, like the Muse, any way to walk from that area to the Price Chopper Plaza. I mean, there's no-
That's what I'm saying, is if you put a sidewalk in there, they're still taking their life in their hands going across this four ninety-five on and off.
If, if I may respond to the chair, the, it's the same as, as, um, Milford. Milford has their bike trail that cuts right across four ninety-five, right under, right underneath four ninety-five, past, past four, uh, four interchanges, and it's, and, and, and it works.
And I run through there, and it's dangerous.
Right, I bring my bike through there, so.
So the choice is you have no access at all, or you have access that requires someone to be alert, but at least they have a sidewalk to walk on as opposed to what, the grass shoulder? I mean, Donny Street has no sidewalk connectivity to get up to the shopping center. I think that was the idea, that that lake area, that, that section could be connected to these businesses.
For, for me, it's a million dollar investment in a tough place to put a sidewalk.
It is tough.
I'm okay, I like sidewalks.
You have to watch out.
But where we put them and our cash flow, and when we do these things, is really what's at discussion here. So, we're, we're trying to figure out how to work the budget for twenty twenty, we've got this nine hundred thousand dollar item in play, and we're, I, I think we're, we're stretching it to put it in a tough spot.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, that it's a tough spot, but, um, based on my experience in Milford, um, it puts the drivers on notice that there are people crossing, there are people using this area. Because when I ride my bike down the- there are people using this area. Because when I ride my bike down West Main Street by 495, I have the same issue, where you're constantly chugging and quickly dart over. When you, at least in Milford, you have that crosswalk, and people are aware, okay, I need to look out, I need to be careful. So, it's difficult, yes, but I think it does make it safer. Weighting the cost factor, I mean, that certainly weighs heavily against, but I think we do need to, we do need pedestrian access and bike access going through that stretch.
So, the cost for the sidewalk on West Main Street, $960,000. So, Milford didn't just put a sidewalk through 495. I'm sure they did a traffic study and a second traffic study, and then they get beacons and lights and everything that's going along with it. Does this $960,000 include signage and lights for 495 and items to make drivers aware and items to make people walking aware that there may or may not be a car approaching at 50 to 70 miles an hour?
Through the chair, it absolutely does.
It does. So, that, that 960,000, in theory, duplicates what Milford has along 495 at Route 85 on their bike trail.
If not better. And that's why the per foot cost is so much more expensive for that section of roadway, because there's elevated sidewalk under 495, there's a lot of wetland issues there, and there's also the need to make sure that we have the adequate traffic controls.
Follow up. If we okay this today, does that sidewalk plan lock Mr. Westling into doing Hayden Row and Wood Street and not Wild Road and West Main, or does it simply give him X amount of dollars, what did we say, $900,000 or whatever it was, to do sidewalks?
Depending on the number that the board supports. The board's approval comes along with a logged-in plan. In other words, if it's Wood Street and Hayden Row, then that's, that's what he will do.
So, I'm fearing that by me going down this, this road and asking these questions, it's going to imply that I'm getting into doing your day-to-day job, and I'm not. I'm just thinking out loud. I actually was, but I caught myself. Someone may or may not have texted me.
Is this going to be bonded, or is this cash?
Bonded.
Bonded?
Yes.
Okay, so the million that I was arguing about, it's not a full million, it's the debt service on the money.
So.
I have to confess, I understand that the board of selectmen had one opinion on the sidewalks and appropriations had another. I don't, appropriations looks at the expenditures, but there's Mr. Manning raising his hand. I kind of thought it was the board of selectmen's job to do the town planning oversight part of it, that those types of decisions on where these things would be placed would be this board's purview. Mr. Manning?
Thank you. I just want to make it clear that the appropriations committee, we discussed not spending perhaps 1.8 million on sidewalks, but we did not have specific pieces to say, do this or not do that. That, we had no group discussion on that. It was strictly, you know, 1 point, it was, I believe it was 1.8 million dollars that we were discussing, and that's an awful lot given the stresses of this budget, and we're not even paying for it in this year's budget. It's going to be ongoing years, as it's a borrowing, that we were just concerned, that's a lot of money in this budget climate. But we did not specific, and we thought maybe it'd be easier to do if it was a smaller amount, but we did not specific, we did not even know the costs of the specific strips of sidewalk. I just want to clarify.
Thank you for clarifying that. That makes more sense to me.
Madam Chair, the other point I would make specific to this sidewalk, and I think one of my colleagues mentioned it, is well, we got to connect the Muse to Price Chopper.
Right.
Why is it our responsibility and not the developer's responsibility to foot the bill to connect the residents that he developed for to services that they are interested in? Somewhere along the way, we missed, we missed an opportunity here, I think, a little bit. Legacy put in all kinds of sidewalks, brought sidewalks to the center of town. I don't know why that, where the taxpayers are, across the community, are paying a million dollars over a period of time to connect sidewalks in a very dangerous place unless we start building tunnels, that really, I think, developers should have covered.
Well, I understand your point, but I can also respond in two ways. One is that I think there's a certain responsibility on the part of the town to provide connectivity for its residents to all the various amenities in various parts of the town, and to provide amenities that will keep our residents safe. And I also recall that not too many years ago, there was a planning board decision that had to do with Golden Pond, and we asked that developer to do just what you're discussing, to provide sidewalk connectivity for those residents up to some of the shopping that was available up at the Lumber Street intersection, that that should be built by the developer. And that was appealed, and it did not go in the favor of the town. The developer was ruled not to be responsible, that that was arbitrary and capricious. So, I love to see other people pay for things that benefit the town, but it doesn't always work that way.
If I may.
Mr. Kamala?
Just to clarify the point that was made by Mr. Here. I was directly involved in the negotiations of the HCA with the Muse developer. The town did push for sidewalks, but because that was a 40B project, we lost that request.
Thank you.
Yeah. And through the chair, we have to also look at it from the point of view of the Chamber of Commerce. You know, if, if people have more access to shops and restaurants and everything else, that they may utilize them a lot more, you know, to, you know, to allow, you know, kids to ride their bikes from, from that area to Price Chopper or to any of the restaurants, or, I don't know if it's a neighborhood, the liquor store. But, but it just, it just gives people another, another, another way of, of being able to get to that stuff. And the people from Downey Street also, that's, that's also tough, you know, coming from the lake area, to be able to, to walk to Price Chopper or something else. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's, I see it as a, as a need that I've noticed since I came here over 20 years ago.
I guess, the way I see it, is that it is, it is a dangerous stretch of road, but it's more dangerous if there's nothing at all. So, you know, people are still going to attempt it. Hopndon Muse, there's a lot of kids there. You know, would you rather have them just going completely on their own, walking in the road or walking on the grass shoulder, or, you know, give some, some degree of safety? It's not perfect, a lot of things aren't perfect, but it would be an improvement, I think, so. But I don't agree that we need the one on Hayden Row. I'd like, I'd like to switch that money around, do the West Main Street and take out that, that duplication on Hayden Row, but that's, that's just-
Is that in our purview to do, to decide?
Yes. Again, it needs to be said that the sidewalks that are being discussed were identified as part of a very inclusive public process conducted by the planning board. There was a needs assessment, and there was a plan that was then developed. And as part of working out the financing for implementing the plan, we came up with a two-phased program. Phase one was funded. We've been asking, I think, for the last two, three years to fund Phase Two. I am a little excited that the board is discussing the opportunity at least to fund a portion of Phase Two.
So, can you tell me again, what's the cost of the Hayden Row piece, and what's the cost of the, of the West Main Street if we were to do one, switch one for the other?
260,000 net more for West, West Main.
Seven hundred for Hayden Row and 100,000 for, for Wood.
And 960 for West Main, Madam Chair.
West, seven, wait.
700 and 100, and Wild was 40.
I don't care about Wild. So, Hayden Row was 700, and the West Main was how much?
960,000.
960. So, that's 260 more than the other one.
What was the cost on Wild Road?
200, sorry, 40,000.
So, what would this do to your budget, Mr. Kamala, if we, if we decided to drop the Hayden Row and do the West Main for another 260? That would throw everything off at this point? No, we're bonding it?
No. I, I think it's, it will still be consistent with the feedback that we received from the appropriations committee, namely find a way to perhaps bring that number down. However, I still need to make the pitch for Hayden Row. We have expanded the school campus along Hayden Row. Whilst I understand the observation that we already have a sidewalk on one side of the road, we have the school campus now on both sides of Hayden Row, and I think for that reason it's important that we continue to look for opportunities to build the sidewalk on the easterly side of Hayden Row.
As the anti-sidewalk candidate this evening, I, I'm fully in support of Hayden Row, because that is a concentration of kids and parents that will use that sidewalk. I am fully opposed to West Main Street, because I think the usage of that sidewalk for a million dollars will be very low, given its proximity and crossing of 495.
All right. So, I was leaning more towards Mr. Cuttino, you know, being from that neighborhood, there really aren't that many services and blah, blah, blah. But I was totally against the Hayden Row, simply because we have a sidewalk, sidewalk 20 feet across the street. Now, I understand what you're saying about the school. The school is kindergarten and first grade. If there are parents that are allowing their kindergarten and first grader to walk down Route 85, I think that DCF may or may not get involved in something like that. So, that argument means nothing to me.
Thank you.
The fact that, the fact that you live in, Mr. Cuttino's similar in the, in that neighborhood, you're not fighting for that, that means more to me. The cheap person in me in town says, I'm all set with, with all of them. Let's just, we can just do Wood Street and save 560,000.
Mr. Nussel is also up, up in that side of town, too.
Yeah, okay.
He hasn't said anything yet.
So, I would be in support of Mr. Cuttino's approach, as well as Mr. Tedstone. I don't see a great need for Hayden Row. We already have one there. As far as prioritizing, I think West Main Street would be number one, but of course, I'm in that part of town, so there's, there is a slight bias. So, I don't see a need for Wild Road, and I think Wood Street could wait also, if I were to prioritize.
Okay.
Clear as mud.
Clear as mud.
Through the chair.
Please, Mr. Kamala.
Regarding Wood Street, the overall goal is to connect the Center Trail to a destination in town, our new destination in town, namely the Fruit Street Fields. And we're doing this portion by portion. Eventually, we're looking for a connection from Main Street all the way down to the Fruit Street Fields. No one will argue that Fruit Street Fields is becoming a destination in town.
Well, maybe not everyone will argue, but I will. Whenever you say, no one will argue, I will always argue. Say, we have a cutting-edge turf field at the high schools that already has sidewalks to it.
I take my comment back.
I agree that Fruit Street is a destination, but I question how many people are really going to walk from downtown to the Fruit Street Fields. I think that's, the drive, parents are driving.
Again, we, we can debate this over and over. I will tell you, one of the, one of the aspects of this community that I really enjoy is when I drive into town or I drive out of town, the number of people that I see on the street, not in cars, walking, running, cycling. It's a, that constituency is a significant component of this community. There are many people who walk and who run in this community.
Not on West Main Street?
Exactly. Yeah. But I think it needs to be said, that I keep hearing that people won't use sidewalks. I can tell you, when we built the sidewalks on Ash Street, we received very many positive comments from the community applauding that investment.
Can I make a motion?
Make a motion.
I move that we fund the $100,000 for the sidewalk from Wood Street to Proctor Street, I mean, on, from Proctor Street to the DPW, approximately 500 feet for $100,000, and that's it. I would be welcome a second, if anyone would like to second that.
You're done. That was a nice trot.
All right.
There you go. Good effort. I'll give it a go. Madam Chair, I move that the board of selectmen support through debt service, or whatever term we want to use for the motion this morning, the development and construction of a sidewalk on Hayden Row Street submitted by the DPW director, and Wood Street is submitted by the DPW director for FY '20.
That one overwhelmed, too.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to support the building of a sidewalk along West Main Street past the, and under 495.
Only? None of the other ones, just that one?
Actually, I'd like to fund them all, but I'm just asking for that one at this point.
So, you've got only, only motion to s-
People can add other motions afterwards.
I'm going to second that.
Okay. Is there any debate or any amendments to that? Okay, the motion on the table is to fund the section of sidewalk along West Main Street only. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
That motion carries by a vote of three to two.
Madam Chair, I move that the board of selectmen support the request of the DPW director to construct the sidewalk along Wood, Wood Street through a debt service.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, no? Yep. Speak up quick.
It's not as, it's not as though I don't support sidewalk on the Wood Street portion. It's just that if we're going to be taking on such a large portion under West Main Street, maybe we ought to wait a year for Wood Street.
I do think Wood Street's a sidewalk to nowhere right now. It's going to be for a long time, but.
So, just wanted to put that out there. I am in support, but I, I think later.
And then the price tag on the Wood Street one is?
100,000.
That's 100. Okay. Was that, was that seconded? You made the motion, was it seconded? Okay. Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to also fund the construction of sidewalk on Wood Street from Proctor Street to the DPW for 100,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed?
No.
Two no, three yes. Okay. All right.
So, what's the last combination?
Still a lot of money.
I move that the board of selectmen support DPW's director to construct the sidewalk through a borrowing along Hayden Row, as submitted.
Oh, I wanted to say yes.
I think sufficient time has passed.
You tried that already?
Okay, we tried that already.
Well, I had to com- I had to combine with Wood Street.
Okay.
Still didn't work. Okay. Okay, so, the two are the Wood Street and the West Main Street. You all set, Mr. Camalo?
I can see it.
Are you all set?
Yes. Fine, except that Hayden Row is not moving forward. I, I, we will continue to look for grant opportunities. I, I understand, um, I, again, I travel on that road. It's not only kids who are going to the Marathon School, it's also kids who are going to the other schools coming from that, the other side of town.
Well, there is one sidewalk, so perhaps this is one that could be pushed off till next year. It's not like it's an area without any sidewalk, whereas these two other ones have nothing at all, so...
Madam Chair.
Mr. Deep, Mr. DPW.
Just to follow up on Mr. Camalo's comment, uh, I did speak with Ben Sweeney. We are gonna look for additional funding sources for that section of Hayden Row. There is a Safe Roads to School, Safe Roots to School program, so we're gonna look for other funding sources that are available.
Okay, alright.
Even better.
Thank you.
We need to-
Thanks, John.
Thank you, Mr. DPW. Okay, uh, was that? So that's, is that it on the budget update, Mr. Camalo?
Mr. Manning?
Appropriations Committee Chair is here to share with the Board an update on the Appropriation Committee's review of the FY twenty budget.
Okay, sorry what we just did to you, but...
Uh, thank you. Uh, before I start, I just want to mention that I live off of Wild Road, so, uh-
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Join my team.
So, uh, good evening. Uh, thank you for letting the Appropriation Committee speak in front of the Board of Selectmen. As the Appropriation Committee deliberates the budget and capital articles, we have made a few observations and would like to comment on a few points. Overall, we are relatively pleased with this year's budget. Per Board of Selectmen request, the Town Manager and Finance Team have found budget items where the expenses and estimates could be adjusted to reduce the overall tax impact to two and a half percent. We have met with department heads to discuss their operational budget and capital requests, and we understand the need for increased services due to overall population growth in town and in the schools. There are two issues that the Committee wishes to bring to the Board of Selectmen's attention tonight. First, the Town of Hockington has been fortunate to have the availability, the availability of free cash this year to pay for many of our expenses. This year, we continue to fund OPEB at four hundred thousand dollars. However, this is about half the amount specified in the OPEB actuarial valuation report. Level contribution should be eight hundred and fifty-one thousand. The analysis of the actuarial report was updated last year, and although the actual funding this year is equal compared to last year's funding, the town is not on track to eliminate the town's unfunded twenty-eight million dollar liability. Because of the tight budget, our OPEB contribution will be underfunded this year. The contribution should be at least six hundred and twenty-four thousand, which assumes a three percent increase in contribution each following year. By not funding per the actuarial report, we continue to kick the can down the road to our future Hockington taxpayers. Recommended OPEB funding is calculated based on work by town employees performed today, not future work. Just like salary, salary paid to employees, funding to OPEB should be required, not the first-line item cut each year in our budget. The Appropriation Committee would like to see full funding in this budget. Next, I want to bring attention to this year's funding sources, specifically free cash. In previous budgets, we have been using our free cash to fund snow and ice deficits and pay capital pay-as-you-go items. This year's pay-as-you-go items include DPW vehicles, police cruisers, and renovations. However, this year, roughly two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of our free cash is funding the operational budget. This concerns the Appropriation Committee. Although not yet a trend, this is the first year in my recollection that the town is utilizing free cash to fund personnel and reoccurring expenses that make up the operational budget. We have modeled the next two years of budgets and do not see us easily getting out of this cycle. We've been fortunate that we have had sizable free cash accumulations over the past few years, but if there is a downturn economically or an extra-large snow expense, we won't have the continued flexibility that we have enjoyed in the past if we rely on fee, free cash to fund salaries. In summary, the Appropriations Committee is relatively pleased with this year's budget, but we continue to keep a watch out for potential budget issues down the road, as we want to see stable and sustainable budgets in the foreseeable future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
If I may?
Camalo, please.
My, thank you for those comments. Um, I, I've been with the town for ten years, and I was instrumental in developing the financial policies for the town. Whilst, uh, I do share your concerns with regard to the funding for OPEB, uh, as well as the, the global overarching concern regarding the use of free cash, I would encourage the Appropriations Committee to really look at the details, um, of where, when, and how we're applying free cash, uh, to fund the operating budget. I specifically do not recall any aspect of the budget where we're using free cash to pay for salaries. Um, whilst the idea of not using free cash to, um, to fund the operating budget is, is an acceptable, I think, guideline, I, I do not see it as an immutable dogma. I, 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 I'm looking and challenge, I'm looking for opportunities to, to find ways as to how we can refine that policy. Uh, we put it together many years ago. What I have learned over the years is that the practical dictates and the realities that we face here in Hockington have inspired us to be very, very creative in, in how we move the budget forward. And I think it's the democratic process that has, in many instances, opened up channels where we find ourselves redirecting, um, our funding sources. For example, we went into this budget process firm on the idea that we're going to start moving some of the, what we consider ongoing commitments, um, such as the, uh, police vehicles, um, ongoing maintenance issues into the operating budget. But the reality, the practical needs, and also the comments that we received through the democratic process led us in a different direction. By the end of the day, when I look at the decisions that have been made regarding the use of free cash, I make the following observations. The process is democratic, the process is thoughtful, it is not whimsical, um, and most importantly, it's laying the foundations for a future discussion on how we refine that policy. Overall, I do agree with you in terms of, we need to provide more funding for OPEB. Overall, I do agree with you that the overarching guideline is not to use free cash, uh, for ongoing expenses. However, if, if your observation is correct that we are funding salaries, because I don't, I don't recall that. If that's the case, we need to fix that.
If I may, for the Chair?
Please.
So, it's not specific to salaries or not, but it's not, typically, we haven't used this free cash to what is in the operational budget. Uh, for instance, we, yes, we did try at first to get the police cruisers, or even for the last couple of years, I've been trying to get OPEB in the, in, just in the operational budget, because it shouldn't be whatever, that's kind of my first point, that, okay, if we have any free cash left, let's, let's use it to pay whatever we can to OPEB. So it should be a line item in the regular operational budget year over year. But it, and I think we have been fortunate, just, I think when I started, if we had five hundred thousand in free cash, that was, that was terrific. And now I think, uh, the norm is two million dollars, or, or whatever it is. So it's, it's actually, that's very good, but can we, now we're gonna start, it seems like we're gonna rely on it of what's in, in that part of the operational budget. Typically, at least from appropriations perspective, you know, we use it for pay-as-you-go or stabilization accounts, that's what we use the free cash for. And if it was a little light this year, then maybe we would only get one cruiser, two cruisers, or hold back on one of the other trucks that we need, push that back a year, and we have that kind of flexibility. So it really does concern that even, even though out of the, all the free cash we had, it wasn't, you know, two hundred and thirty-five thousand wasn't, you know, using a large portion of it, but it, it's starting a, 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 not a trend that I'd hope not to see down the road. And as, Mr. Camalo, as you're talking, that we'd like to see alternatives to that down the road. I think that's a good idea, but I just wanted to bring that attention that the, the Appropriations Committee wasn't particularly comfortable with going down that route. You know, a couple of comments that we've had as a committee is that this is like, what, we've had tons of new growth, this is, this is one of our better years, if not one of the best years going forward in terms of, of, you know, revenue coming in because of the new growth, and, and what is the trend going down the road? If we are having trouble now with this year's budget, are we gonna be having problems down the road? And that's, that's what we're looking down for. It's not just this year's budget, but being prepared down the road. And, you know, we are conservative, whether it's the Board of Selectmen or the Appropriations Committee, we are pretty conservative on our budgeting, and, and we don't want to run, uh, in the wrong direction, but we just want to bring that to your attention.
A, a question to, through the Chair, to, to either the, uh, Mike or to Mr. Camalo. You know, and it's commendable that we got to two point five percent, but did we, did we get to the two point five from the two point nine seven, or whatever it was, because we broke some of these rules that we want to stick to? Because if it, if it's really meaningless to hit the two point, the two point five, but we're moving stuff around that's unnecessary-
Pockets in the pants.
Yeah, if we're just moving pockets, let's just be honest with ourselves and say, "Look, we're at two point seven two this year, but we didn't break any rules." You know, is that the way we would, would want to do it?
If I may, firstly, when we presented the budget for the first time to the Selectmen, the feedback that we received acknowledged that the expenses were going up substantially, and the charge that was given to us was to go and identify ways of using our sources to fund the expanding or increasing budget. So clearly, the instruction that was given to us was, go find creative ways of using our diverse funding sources to make this budget work. That's the instruction that I believe I, I heard from the Board. And then in terms of how we got there, we used a menu. In fact, it was two strategies. There were instances where we actually reduced budgets. There were so instances, there were also instances where we then moved funding sources away from taxation to free cash. In doing so, we had two broad categories that we focused on. We focused on what I consider capitalization, whether it's ongoing maintenance or buying equipment, uh, that is needed for some, in some instances for our ability to operate, but it's still capitalization. So that was one grouping. The other grouping was clearly what, what we always refer to as the pay-as-you-go projects. So in answer to your question, we used a combination of cut expenditures, but at the same time also moved funds around.
Right, but, but what I'm getting to is, i- it, it sounds like we, we, um, broke precedent from stuff that you never wanted to do and you never wanted to do, just to meet a, an edict that came down from the Board of Selectmen, you know, and, and, and I don't know, I, I don't know, I, I didn't, I don't know, Mr., I can't speak for the rest of, I didn't want you guys to have to change, um, your, your basic practices in order to meet this guideline.
We, through the Chair, we did not, we did not break any principle.
Of your own principles?
Yes, exactly. We, we did not. What we didn't do was to start transitioning to what we believe is the ideal situation. Tax for capital projects, tax for ongoing expenditures where, which involve capitalization, uh, and also tax for OPEB. Uh, there's also been the observation that we should tax for funding this snow and ice deficit. These are items that normally would be considered as part of the operating budget. What we did was to then find or continue what we've done before. So this is why I'm answering your question this way. Continue doing what we've done before, use free cash to fund that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. Alright. Uh, anything more on the budget, Mr. Camalo? We all set on that?
No, I think we're all set. Unless there's, is there anything else? I think we're good.
So can we just get a quick summary of where we are as of tonight? Because this is it before town meeting, correct?
This is it.
What's, what's the bottom line? I know we got a couple of adjustments based on some debt service changes right now through the sidewalks, but where are we in general?
Can I just ask one question before you that one?
Yes.
Because it involves it. Is, uh, the, um, uh, Hockington Day all set for, for next year?
We're good to go. Um, we will have the party.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure, because, uh, walking out of church, I get asked.
Yes, okay.
Um, to Mr. Harris' question, the, the overall tax impact, um, is now met at two point five percent. Um, we are caught there, I think, in, as I said, uh, earlier, uh, by adjusting both the funding sources as well as some of the expenditures. So, overall, we have more, we have met the Board's, uh-
And all our colleagues across the various departments are in reasonably good shape and agreeable to what we're doing?
My understanding is yes, and the School Committee Chair is here, so is the Superintendent, Dr. Kavanaugh.
Okay. Um, and then how about the number that's gonna be on the ballot for the under ride? Is that set?
That number has not changed.
Has not changed?
Yes.
I, I don't believe there's an opportunity to change it, because that's what was voted, and the ballots have been printed.
Correct.
So, to say it's not changed, it cannot change.
Yeah.
Well, we had, we had some discussion about moving it a little bit as we got closer, but now that it's set, it's set, and it's-
It's set.
As long as it's what we talked about, it's good.
Dollar nothing. Okay. Alright. Moving along?
Yes.
Alright. Um, we have the twenty nineteen annual town meeting. Uh, the Board of Selectmen will sign the final annual, annual town meeting warrant. We'll finalize motions, take positions on articles, and we'll discuss its town meeting presentations. And we have the warrant, and there are quite a number of articles that we have to make a recommendation on. So, um, the-
So this is the actual sheet right here?
Yes. I've got my own here. So, what is, what is this that you're passing to me? What is this?
Yeah, uh, this is the list of articles that the Board still needs to adapt on.
I made, I made a list, too. Okay, so, let's start by going through the articles that we need to take a position on. Um, uh, so, Article two supplemental appropriation and transfers required recommendations. Um-
Go over.
Alright. Moved and seconded. Okay, moved and seconded, um, to support. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
An aye. Opposed? That is unanimous. Okay. Uh, next for our approval is Article ten. This is the FY twenty twenty operating budget.
Madam Chair, can I suggest that we just put a standing motion on the table in the affirmative for each one of these articles as we reach it, and we can just take the vote without having to get the motions and seconds?
I'll second that if we have to.
So what are you saying then, that we just go ahead and automatically just do a blanket approval of all these?
No, the motion on the table for all the articles that we're gonna call for.
We don't have to make a motion and second.
Take a vote on each one.
Okay, all right. Is that, do I need to vote that? Mr.?
Well, I seconded it.
Okay, all right. So the motion is to take a standing vote of approval, and then we will just, we won't have to go through a motion to second each time. All those in favor of Mr. Hertz's suggestion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that is unanimous. Okay, Article 10 fiscal 2020 operating budget.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article 15, this is establishment of the school department stabilization fund, acceptance of fourth paragraph of MGL. Chapter 40, section 58.
If I may.
Mr. Camallo?
By way of introduction, we've been working with our colleagues from the school side to formulate this article as presented in the warrant as well as the motions document. I believe at this point, there is final agreement and understanding that this is the article moving forward. It is a four-part article. The first part establishes the school department stabilization fund to be used upon further appropriation and at the direction of the school committee for the purposes of paying school department costs related in war or in a significant part is reasonably determined by the school committee to address impacts on the Hopkinton Public Schools resulting from enrollment by residents of legacy farms. That's step number one. Number two, I would be asking town meeting to allow the dedication, without further appropriation, of all or a percentage not less than 25%. And then step three, dedicating a percentage not less than 25% of all receipts from any private source, including any receipts accepted pursuant to the legacy farms' cost community agreement. And then finally, raising and appropriating a specific amount that will be available for use by the school committee in FY 20. As you'll see in the motion, that amount has been set at 200,000.
Question?
So if I understand this correctly, this would just automatically give that money without any oversight? Uh, I'm sorry, without the Board of Selectmen's oversight?
No.
Or my?
Let me explain the process. If you're looking for whether there will be a specific vote by the selectmen, that's not intended in this process. The overall oversight is established through town meeting. Town meeting sets, wants to set the stabilization fund. Town meeting votes to put money into the stabilization fund. Town meeting votes to take money out of the stabilization fund at the direction and the control by the school committee.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, all those in favor of recommending Article 15?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Next is Article 17, pay-as-you-go capital expenses. Motion to recommend? Or we already had the motion. All those in favor of supporting Article 17?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Opposed, that is unanimous. Okay. Article 18 is purchase of valve maintenance trailer system. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous.
VMTS.
That's right. Article 19 is purchase of a water department truck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Article 20, purchase of a bucket truck. Mr. Camallo, there's your bucket truck. All those in, is there discussion or vote?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article 21, purchase of a multipurpose municipal tractor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is unanimous. Article 22, sewer comprehensive wastewater management plan update. Motion to recommend? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's a good one, I know that's a big one.
Unanimous. Okay, Article 23, sidewalk master plan phase two. So what we're voting right now, Mr. Camallo, will be the recommendations that we just made at this meeting?
Correct, Wood Street and West Main Street.
All right. Okay. All those in favor of recommending, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, that is four to one. It carries. Article 25, purchase of a ladder truck. This is going to be bonded. And so it's also going to be on the ballot as question, as question two on the ballot. All those in favor to recommend purchase of the ladder truck, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposition. Okay, Article 26.
Was that one to four to one?
That was, no, that was uni, ladder truck was unanimous. But the sidewalk was four to one.
Right.
You voted against it.
Yep.
Okay. Article 26, public safety software upgrade. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Article 27, town hall basement renovation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Article 28, security cameras for the school. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Article 29, center school renovation and reuse feasibility study. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Article 30, community preservation funds. All those in favor of recommending, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 45. Article 45 is the kennel licensing bylaw. Oh, wait a minute, 45. I have, on the warrant, Mr. Camallo, I have that as Article 44. It says 45.
Which warrant?
44 is that change of selectmen to select board one.
No.
I just wanna confirm. I may be looking at.
That's been dropped.
I do not think that that has been dropped.
I have 43 is the change to select board, and I have 44 is the kennel licensing.
Yeah. You may have an older version. The current version is 45. Yes, the one we just gave. Well, the one I gave you today has been superseded by the one we distributed.
Yes, the one that was here on the.
I had my notes, so I'm using the one. So it's now Article 45. So excuse me for being confused, but if that's Article 45, then what is now, what's now Article 44 on the new one?
44 is.
It's the select.
Yeah, select board.
Selectmen, it's not a select board, it's a selectman.
And so that was 43 before. So has something been added in 43? The numbers aren't adding up.
Yes. There's two. The planning board had asked that one of its articles be removed. They then came back and asked that an article be reinserted.
Okay, that's, all right. Get the numbers right before town meeting. Okay, so it is now Article 45, it's kennel licensing bylaw. All those in favor of recommending, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is unanimous. Okay, Article 49 is the Fruit Street lease. All those in favor?
What is this, Madam Chair, I'm sorry?
This is a request to increase that lease on the Fruit Street land for a youth organization not to exceed 99 years.
Okay.
I think it was initially less, like 15.
Yeah.
I had a feeling that wasn't realistic. The 99 is what's changed from what we voted at 2017.
Okay.
Okay, Fruit Street lease. All those in favor of recommending, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is also unanimous. Article 50 is the Chamberlain Street curve. Sounds like it's kind of a land swap. All those in favor of recommending, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is unanimous. Article 50 is municipal parking.
51.
Yeah, 51.
51, see, I got my numbers all up, okay.
Yeah, the board may hold until after the executive session.
We're gonna wait on voting for that till we do the executive session.
Yeah.
All right, we'll hold on that end. Is that the same? No, no, that's only for that one. Okay, then Article 52 is easements for the Main Street corridor reauthorization. All those in favor of recommending, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is unanimous. And administrative, South Middle, this is Article 44, administrative, the South Middlesex Regional Vocational School District Agreement. All those in favor?
Madam Chair, real quick, Mr. Camallo, is Mr. Mieri's in on this?
Yes, and in fact, we started discussing this issue with the council representing Middlesex, sorry, the Middlesex Regional Vocational School. Some time last year, we did influence a couple of the new provisions and raised satisfied with the document as it is.
So we're ready to vote tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, then all those in favor of recommending Article 54, South Middlesex Regional Vocational School District, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is unanimous. And that does it for the warrant. Okay. So. Pieces of paper, here we go. Spread out a little bit of the place.
If I may?
Mr. Camallo, please.
Respectfully, I believe the chair will accept a motion to formally sign the 2019 annual town meeting warrant.
Favor of motion for that?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor of signing the 2019 town warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is unanimous. Okay, we will do that. Town managers' report. Mr. Connolly, deposit and investment report. The Board of Selectmen will receive a financial update from Michael Connolly, treasurer and collector.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for your patience. Not too far off.
I'm here tonight to, I would say, give some good news. Usually I'm here to borrow money or talk about borrowing some money. But this is, I would say, the first official quarterly report that we've now enacted. We'll be doing these quarterly. I'm not sure if you've got, if you're able to see this, but basically what we've got here is general fund monies as well as other deposits, which would include trust funds, performance bonds, Parks and Recreation, which is a enterprise fund. And we have student activity balances, accounts. We have trust funds, stabilization funds, as well as OPEB funds. So it's broken down into these three different categories typically. Trust funds, I mean, we'll start off with general funds. Currently, we have this quarter $31 million in general fund monies that are invested primarily in money market accounts. MMDT is the Massachusetts Municipal Depository Trust. That's a pooled investment, investment option for local governments. It's been around since 1977, and the state endorses this investment fund. So that's primarily where general fund monies are invested. You can't have any general fund monies at risk. So obviously, we can't invest in stocks, bonds, or any long-term investments. So these are typically short-term investments. This quarter, we earned, total earnings for the quarter was $159,000 in interest earned for the period ending March 31st, 2019. Average interest rate for these accounts was 2.12%, ranging from 1.69 in a typical money market account. Some money market accounts are higher. The higher interest rate was 2.6%, which MMDT is now offering. So that's the highest rate that's happening right now. And a lot of banks are starting to increase their rates. I've called around to the banks to see what they can do to increase their interest rates for general fund investments. Thus far through the first three quarters, we've earned $404,581, and we're projected to earn about, I'd say, about $540,000 we're projected to earn. Last year, we earned $356,000. I think the previous year, we earned $192,000. So rates are going up, but I'm also taking advantage of the higher rates that are out there. So based on these numbers, you know, it looks pretty good. As you all know, interest earned on general fund money has a positive effect on free cash. So that's always a positive, as well as collections. Then we have the second, I don't know if you're looking at this actual balance report here. The second section we're looking at is performance bonds, the Parks and Recs account. And then these are other smaller trust fund accounts that have been around for many years. Typically, they're in Unibank, Middlesex Savings. Again, they were here for many years prior to my coming on board. And these are in just basic, I would say, savings or checking accounts, getting very little interest right now. For this quarter, the total, the total amount was $2 million, a little over $2 million, and it's earned $2,806 in this past quarter. Again, these are, some of these trust fund accounts are school trust fund accounts, where it might be for a scholarship fund and things of that nature. And then we have the student activities accounts. There's four student activity accounts that are sitting out there right now. I know there's some talk at some point in time that we're gonna change how those are set up, but for right now, they're still the same standard where these accounts are earning just basic interest. And looking at what it's earned for the past quarter, I think the average interest was, uh, let's see. I had it here. Average interest quarter was. It ranged from a low 0.367% to a high of 0.26%. And now we're gonna move on to the trust funds and the stabilization.
Total number of those, Michael, please?
Say again?
Total amount in those funds, those four student funds?
The total amount is $2,000,003.2. So $2,320,000. Again, they're just small accounts that are out there. They're not with the larger trust fund accounts that we're having invested through an investment firm, Bartholomew and Company. These accounts, just they're on the books, they've been on the books for many years. You know, the person to talk to about what we would do with these accounts would be whoever, you know, it would be the trust fund, you know, the commissioners of the trust funds, basically, if we wanna move those accounts into, with the other trust funds. I know when I came here, my question was, how come these accounts are here? And these are trust funds, and they're not with these other trust funds? But for right now, that's where they're at, they're sitting in these accounts. Part of it could be when the trust fund was created, it had to be, it had to stay at this particular account at this particular bank.
The largest balance on the small trust is $14,000. So these are, these are not accounts that are gonna get a lot of management attention from a bank holding them.
But there's, in the student activities funds accounts? But there's, in the student activities funds accounts, there's two million three hundred and some thousand dollars?
No, no, that's, no, the grand total, it's two hundred and two thousand.
Okay.
And that's highly, that really fluctuates.
I'm not sure if you're looking at, if you're looking at this at all, I, I thought it was gonna be on the overhead, but I guess it's not.
Yeah, Mike speaking from page one oh one of today's.
I'm, I'm going from here to here and giving you a grand total in this section, I'm break, I broke it down into sections based on my bullet points.
So even two hundred thousand, if it was a constant balance, we could try to do something better, but the money flows in and then it flows out, it's a real.
There's very little activity in these accounts, other than the student, other than the student activities accounts. So that makes up the-
Let's explore that for a second, there's very little activity on, take out the two hundred grand from the student account, and I've heard a two million three number, so that needs a two million one number?
Right.
Why are we having two million dollars sitting there doing nothing?
Well, Parks and Rec is another account that has a lot of fluctuation in it, that's a million six of it.
Okay, so there is some activity in that piece.
There's a lot of activity in that one, what you don't see activity in is the Carver Trust, which is sixty-five hundred.
Carver Trust?
The Carver, somebody named Carver left a small trust.
See, some of these trust funds, again, I, I know there's a trust fund out there that was given to the town in nineteen, in nineteen oh four, and, you know, some of these trusts go back decades, and they've just been sitting there.
Alright, we can move on.
I remember when Frankfurt discussed the nickel.
I know, too bad we couldn't have used the money when, when six thousand dollars was worth six thousand dollars.
No, that's good, let's keep going.
Moving on. Onto the money, the big money.
We went by the big money already.
That's, well, the big money's in command accounts.
I always look at the general fund money, that's, that's my opinion, the big money, but we do now have money in, in trust funds, and OPEB is being handled by Bartholomew and Company, they're an investment firm. They typically handle, there's over two hundred and fifty municipalities that they handle, and I think they're handling about one point four billion in total city and town funds that they invest for. And, and these funds, you can invest in long-term investments, specifically, as we move to the trust funds, you can invest in common stock, corporate bonds, CDs, treasury bonds, government agencies, and for this, for this past, the total trust funds and stabilization funds amount to seven million point one eight. And again, during this period of time, it earned, this portfolio earned three hundred thousand, over three hundred thousand dollars, to be specific, three, three hundred thousand six hundred and twenty-six for that quarter. The annualized rate of interest for the whole portfolio was eighteen point two percent. So when you're investing in long-term investments like, like stocks, bonds, you could have a good quarter, depending on what's happening with the Fed, if they raise interest rates, you know, the value of the stock could go down. This past quarter, we enjoyed a, a very good quarter when it came to investments, and we realized, you know, and a, a very good positive gain.
And that seven million includes stabilization and all that, is what the gentleman spoke to earlier, that Standard and Poor's looks to as reserves, correct? So these trusts, those trusts anyway are looked at as reserves?
Some of them qualify as reserves.
Not all of them.
The stabilization would qualify as reserve, for example, the McGovern Library Trust is in there, and it would not qualify as a reserve.
Right.
What, what of that seven million does qualify as reserves, besides stabilization, roughly?
Stabilization and capital stabilization.
I'd say stabilization and capital stabilization, so you're, you're looking at-
So three million five hundred, basically?
Three million six, and then, community preservation is in that pool as well, and then the small trusts, with the McGovern Trust being the biggest of them. And then the OPEB is separate, that's the next category, Michael will talk about.
Right. And then, and then we have OPEB, which was mentioned tonight, currently, we have two point four five million in, in the OPEB account. This is also managed by Bartholomew and Company. And, and they invest in accordance to Mass. General law, chapter sixty, section two oh three, which is referred to as the prudent investment rule, investment rule, and they invest in domestic common stock, international common stock, alternative investments, domestic bonds, international bonds, and some cash equivalents. During this period of time, the portfolio gained in value of a hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars for this period, with an annualized rate of thirty point eight nine percent. So again, it had a, it had a good quarter, this past quarter. So, I know last year, twenty eighteen, there was, there was a quarter there where we had a bad quarter, but based on what's happened, the only thing I'd be worry about, worried about is, is some of these stocks, as you can see, were at thirty point five percent with common stock and the trust funds. You know, we might, I might wanna talk with Tim and Bartholomew about reducing the amount that we have in stocks, because if a recession, I'm not saying there is gonna be a recession, but if a recession comes, it could have a negative effect on long-term investments, such as stocks and long-term corporate bonds. And I believe that is it. Are there any questions?
So let me just add a comment about the program, the investing program, there's some things we really wanna do. The first one we wanna do is reporting, we wanna get this information out to you, wanna get it to the town manager, we wanna post it on the website, so people can see where the forty or fifty million dollars we have is, and that we're taking good care of it. The next thing we wanna do is make sure we're compliant with all the requirements, so the commissioner of bank maintains a legal list, and that applies to investment restrictions for certain of our funds, and we're working with our investment advisor to make sure that we're fully compliant. And once we convince ourselves that we are fully compliant, we're gonna make sure that we are prudent in our investing. And Mike started to talk about the risk profile, so for the cash, we need to make payroll and to buy the bucket truck and to do other things, we have that in the safest investments there can be, and we get correspondingly low returns. For the trust funds, we have a thirty percent weighting in common stock, and we're getting better returns, and for the OPEB, we have a fifty-five percent weighting in stock, which is the money we think we need longest in the future. So, something we should all do periodically is review our risk profile and think about whether the investment portfolio matches our risk profile. So the advisor can advise, but they can only advise based on what our risk is. And if we were totally risk adverse, we would put the OPEB buddy all in the MMDT, earn very low percentage, and it would take us fifty more years to fund the liability. So we really have to balance that, and it's something we're looking at closely, and we look forward to talking to you about this every quarter, as we bring you up to date on the status of the funds.
Excellent.
Great presentation, and I don't think in ten or eleven years, we've ever had that before, at that level, at that level of detail. And I think it's very, very well done, and there was a lot of good numbers in there, I wish I had some of those numbers.
Good job by Mike and Diane.
Yes. And to get this quarterly now, fabulous.
All good news.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
And I think you heard the auditor mention what an outstanding team we have in this town, that it's really above and beyond what you see in a lot of communities, so we're very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Excellent. And last, last but not least, we have a public safety facility study, some preliminary thoughts. This will be presented to the board of selectmen by consultant Travis Miller regarding public safety facility location study. And the chief has been working with Mr. Miller to start taking steps towards that fire station need that we've, that's been hanging out there for, so quick up, update, you'd be great, welcome.
Thank you very much, appreciate you having us, I hope the boys are still doing okay, I haven't gotten an update in a while.
They are doing alright, they are up four to one with approximately two minutes and thirty-four seconds left.
Oh, no pressure, no pressure, go ahead and concentrate.
So I would like to make a motion to send the last Canadian team back to Canada and keep the Stanley Cup in the U.S. since nineteen ninety-two.
Perfect.
Second. Thank you very much for having us, and I appreciate it, and Mr. Kamalo, thank you for bringing us in under your agenda, and we had a little bit of dialogue with you, and I think I'm gonna let Travis just give us a, a brief kinda synopsis of where we are and let any questions come up, so thanks.
We've waited for this one for a long time, this is great, thank you.
We're gonna keep it short tonight, unfortunately, we have to.
So just so you know a little bit about who I am, thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Manager, members of the board, and the three people who decided to stay this long, that's right. And for those of you running home to see the game, good luck. So I've been doing public safety management consulting for about twenty-five years, I've worked with, I don't know, five or six hundred communities, I've probably done fifty or sixty projects that look at the issue we're talking about tonight, which is growing community, beginning to wonder whether or not they need to start thinking about expansion of fire rescue services, are we located in the right place? We're located in a, in a place that historically made a ton of sense, because it was in the middle of what was the town, surrounded by a fairly large rural area, and now, I mean, not only four ninety-five, but as you continue to expand across the community, it's become time to start asking, do we need a second location, are we thinking, you know, long-term? What should we be doing, and where should we go? We looked at a variety of options, including how good a guess did they make when they put the existing station, where they put it? If we could, if we just plop a single station down someplace, could we, by moving it, improve service delivery across the community? They made a really good guess, I mean, it continues to be an excellent location to maintain a fire rescue station. But you are now in a position where you're gonna need to start thinking about expansion in terms of the number of stations that you've got out there. You know, we kinda went into this with this open mind, and, and the way our model works is, we could take addresses, we could take eighty South Street and force the model to say, hey, does that make anything better if we give that to you as a fire station? We could also let the model loose and just say, okay, if we maintain headquarters where we've got it today, where would you drop a second fire station? We then said, well, what if we let headquarters go away, where would you put two stations? Just to sort of test and make sure, because as we all know, these are, these are not decisions that you're gonna make for five or ten years, these are multi-generational kinds of decisions, are you still watching the score, you gonna let us know when the game's over? Thank you, just making sure you're on top of your job. So, as we go through this process, we're trying to make sure that if you go ahead and invest money, significant money, in the analysis that'll need to come about what do we need in terms of facilities, and then really significant money when it comes time to build one of these facilities, or more than one, to make sure that you can answer when you're walking to church, or you're walking to the grocery store, you're out for a run, and trying to cross the ramp at four ninety-five, and somebody stops you on the other side trying to cross the ramp at four ninety-five. Did you look at everything? Have we decided to spend this money and make this investment in the community based on considering the full range of options? And while we've not looked at every single piece of dirt that you might be able to go out and purchase, we have, I think, brought you to the point where you can comfortably move on to the next set of steps, which is having somebody come in and take a look at the existing facility, having that same team come in and take a look at, what do we need, sort of system-wide writ large, in terms of public safety resources? And then making a determination based on the existing facility, what could we take off the list of things that we need using that facility? What does that leave us with in terms of needing to construct a new facility? Part of that is that, if I were doing this, I'd ask, I'd ask whoever came in and did it to give me two sets of options. One would be fire rescue only, and then the second thing I would do is look at public safety. It's not gonna cost you any more money to have them do that, it's, they're running the same analysis essentially, to do it one way or the other. But I think, going back to that idea of being able to answer to our constituents as we walk out of whatever we're walking out of, or standing inside of some soccer field, and someone approaches us, being able to say, yes, we looked at everything. We, or as many of those things as we could conceive of at the time. And so, I think we've done that, I think we've set you on the right path. I think it's, it's time for you to start considering what you do next, and that's essentially another more significant study as we really move forward. That's the short version.
Questions from the board, Mr. Herr?
Is this a fire safety only, or is this a fire safety and police, so a combined effort?
Yeah, so, given the size of the community, the location of the law enforcement, where law enforcement responds from is dynamic, where once they've come out of roll call and patrol is distributed across the community the way that they're gonna distribute themselves, where your report writing station is, or where your lockup is, or any of those things, is pretty irrelevant, geographically, right? If you're Las Vegas, and Bureau of Land Management comes in and says, okay, you can take that ten thousand acres, which literally, they literally come in and say, you can have that fifteen square mile area over there. Metro PD and everybody else goes in and says, we need another police station, we need eight more fire stations, we need fourteen more elementary schools, I mean, it's crazy, right? You're not in that situation. Because law enforcement's generally dynamically deployed, whether you move that one mile, or three miles, or four miles, one way or the other, or you leave it where it is, it's not gonna impact their response times to, to critical calls.
Okay.
And from a, people going to pick up a traffic report, or detectives going out, leaving from where they, their office is to go to somebody's house and interview them, is irrelevant. So it's the statically deployed, the generally statically deployed nature of fire rescue, which requires you to do that same analysis that Walgreens does, right? They, it's the same model, except their customers come to them, as opposed to you going to your customers on a fire rescue basis. I think the idea came up fairly late in the conversation, which was, if you're going to bring in architects and engineers and geotech people, and you're gonna bring in somebody like me to look at operations, and all this, this team that you, that you will assemble in this next project, it, it just makes sense to look at it from an overall public safety needs assessment perspective, rather than simply looking at it from a, hey, do we need more places for firefighters to sleep so that we can make sure we're getting to places in X minutes or less? And meeting, and using the standard that the chief has developed, providing the level of service that we wanna provide as often as possible, without saying to people, gee, we're gonna have to go to mutual aid, because we don't have any resources here within the, the community. So it's both.
Got it, with the satellite being more on the police-law enforcement side.
Yeah, and I, I, I think that really what will end up happening, if you do this, if you build, whether it's a new fire station or it's a new public safety facility, demands of modern fire rescue and what that looks like in terms of people thinking not only about, you know, engines and ambulances and ladder trucks and a chief's car coming out of a garage and a place for people to live and sleep, it's... I had the, I had the absolute great pleasure of being here on Marathon Day, it was, and I got, I mean, the chief did some really nice thing, we got a chance to be behind the scenes and see it, and the impact that that has on you, even if it's only that event, the fact that every, every public safety resource in this community is essentially a quarter mile away from the starting line. The EOC and the way that you're having to like sort of distribute the management of that significant event to various small pockets around the community, you've got things like that that you ought to be looking at also. It's very possible that you'd end up in a, with a headquarters for fire rescue that is not where it sits right now, and that that would be the substation.
Okay.
Mr. Kamalo?
Great question, Mr. Herr, great answer. It also needs to be said, part of this discussion again includes police, fire, the other two key functions that public safety performs, communications-
Yep.
-as well as emergency management.
Yep.
So, in this discussion, I think, as, as was mentioned earlier, initially, our thought process was, let's look at the fire department, but as we progressed, we said, perhaps this is the opportunity to leverage the resources that may actually already be assembled and mobilized, to then look at the broader issues regarding public safety, that includes police, fire, communications, and emergency management.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Were you able to review the, the study from, or the report from the study that, that was done with, with the Ashland?
Yeah, MRI regional.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I mean, I, we're not here to talk about regionalization, which I'm a huge proponent for.
We'll have to sort of kick this off originally.
Yeah, I mean, I think, well, I think that as you look at the, you look at service delivery, if you're thinking about building a new station, and somebody else near you is thinking about building a new sta- is thinking about building a new station, it's worthwhile communicating with one another about where those resources are going to go, whether you merge or not. I've worked in environments, there are counties that I've worked with that have twenty fire departments. They're all separate. They do these countywide merger studies constantly. The answer is always no. But what they've done is they've figured out operational ways to make the interaction of those departments seamless, whether it's something so simple as we're going to have regional dispatch that's going to go get me the three closest engines, the closest ladder, and the closest chief that can come run this event. I mean, I've done things where I've literally been sitting in battalion chief's car. We went and ran an event with units from five communities in a community that that person didn't work for. But it's the same operating procedures. They, they're going to do the same things. The units are staffed the same way. They've got the same equipment. So from a broader community perspective, an accident up on four-ninety-five, big accident, you know that what you're getting is going to be the same no matter what community sends it to you.
Yeah, my problem was specific to the three years the chief and I sat in a meeting once a week, some neighbor in town, and we just couldn't make it happen.
Well, there were some, there were some...
We do share a response, but the, we were literally looking at infrastructure and it just couldn't play out.
Yeah, there, there were issues with the, with, I was familiar with that. I've been on that project. I was familiar with what went on sort of in the background of the project. I know a lot of the people that were involved in that, and it, it was allowed to run away from itself in a, in a significant and early way, unfortunately.
Well, I'm sorry to bring Mr. Close, but we have an executive session we have to pick up with as well. And I trust that we will be seeing Mr. Miller again to move ahead with this board. So unless there's some burning questions, I'd like to, I think we need to move the meeting along. Thank you very much for coming.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Appreciate what you've done.
Appreciate it, Madam Chair.
We're working with you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Game over. Four-one.
Appreciate it.
We won. Yay.
Stanley Cup stays in the U.S. Out of the gander, class.
Thank you.
Could you say your winner, Columbus?
One-two.
Oh, oh, all right.
Okay. Board members, I, in the interest of the hour and our later obligations, I would like to pass over liaison reports, board invites, and agenda items unless there is something...
Nope. So moved.
...burning. I will say, we did receive a notice, there is a meeting on the night of April twenty-fourth, that's Thursday, at Five McCannum Road in Hoppington at seven o'clock regarding the CXX, the CXX Bridge that is going to be rebuilt on Fruit Street. And they are discussing, rather than keeping one lane open for a four-year project, they're discussing closing the entire bridge for a full year. So if anyone is interested in that, it's going to be quite a disruption. They might want to attend that. So are there other things? Okay. Hearing none, I would just like to make one comment before we close out. This is our last selectmen's meeting of this board before the election on May twentieth. Of course, we have town meeting. I sincerely hope, as I believe Mr. Tedstone does, that we will both be given the honor to continue to serve on this board. But I would just like to say thank you to the entire team, to our town team, our town manager, our assistant manager, all our town officials that we've worked with, and for all my fellow members of the Board of Selectmen, it's been an experience that has honored me. I've learned so much, and I've been just delighted to work with everyone, and I want to say thank you.
I feel the exact same way.
Okay. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, no, no. We're going to, we're, we're, we're not adjourning. We're going back into executive session, don't we? We adjourn from executive sessions?
So we adjourn the main meeting? And do I need to adjourn the main meeting, and then we pick up executive or not adjourn this?
We have anything to do after this?
I'm trying to digest two things here. The, the motion should be to end the open session and move into...
Reconvene.
Yes, reconvene in executive session.
Correct.
And to adjourn the meeting at the end of the executive session.
So moved.
Okay.
Hurry, yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you.
The executive session we're going to, this should be a roll call vote to go into executive session. Hurry, yes.
Tedstone. That's really us.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we make sure we record it as such?
Yeah.